Good evening, everybody. Sorry to be a little late, 7:34. This is regular school committee meeting of June 17th, the last of our regular school year meetings, and we'll go to a summer schedule on dates to be determined later this evening. So we'll start right in with the approval of minutes. You should, at your places, have received a revision to the minutes circulated previously. Dennis, any elaboration on the changes? No?
No, I don't think it was really substantive changes, just to add some little detail.
But the ones at your place are the most recent ones that the Senate has wanted.
So if I could get a motion to approve the minutes, please. Right, so move? Second?
Second.
Any discussion, comment, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Student communications. I don't see a student. Any other communications?
Two things I'd like to mention. First of all, I'd like to introduce Becky Case. Becky is here. If you wave Becky. Becky is the newly appointed Assistant Principal at East School. Becky, of course, has worked for us for a long, long time as a special ed teacher and more recently as the preschool coordinator. So we're very happy that Becky is moving to this new role. Today, we advertised for a replacement for her role as pre-K coordinator at East School, and so we welcome you, Becky. Congratulations.
Happy to have you.
That's great, welcome.
Second thing is, just before we got started this evening, I got an email from California, and it's just a good feeling message, and I think I want to share it. It says, "Mrs. Gall, my name is Jennifer Olson, and I am a school psychologist in California. I saw the amazing tribute to Mr. Bodie via the National Association of School Psychologists. I was so touched and moved, I just had to send someone an email. This, that is the enthusiasm and pride of being an educator. The care and responsibility of raising a community of amazing children is why I'm beginning my career in the educational field. It is not to only care about raising test scores, focus on lack of money, cuts, and turmoil that is facing schools around the country. Thank you so much for your dedication and Hingham to education and to your community. I'm so glad that your schools have such pride, respect, and care for one another." And certainly, I think we would all agree that over the last week and a half or so, there have been amazing happenings, and really, a lot of appreciation to our parents and staff and students, but particularly to parents who are very creative and thinking about nice ways to recognize us all. And we appreciate that.
I'd just like to add to that, and thank H-CAM, or wherever you are, for being involved with that project, because they did a fabulous job, and on behalf of the entire community, I think we really have to thank them, and their efforts then got it on the Boston TV news, too. But it was just their involvement and the editing of it, it was so professional, and I really thank them, too, for bringing everyone together.
Good point, thank you.
Great. And Carol has another bit of news some of you may have seen in the email today that we'd share under Communications.
So Susannah Hunt, who's president of the Hingham Education Foundation, sent out a thank you note, and I know that Paula Girard-McKinnon sent it out on her list, and I'm not sure if all the principals received it or not, but just wanted to share that they've just ended their season on the grueling grant process, decision-making process. These guys work so hard, and they really take it all very seriously, and they were very happy to announce that they've granted 42 grants, the total $117,500. And, you know, a lot of this money has been earned from, of course, the phoneathon that they have in the fall, but they've added this spelling bee, which is for younger kids, which is, this is their second year doing it. They've also added a tennis tournament, which they do with Cohasset Education Foundation, so it's, you know, it's really great that they're kind of thinking in new directions. And of course, they have the Red Apple, they have the restaurants, Be Good Chipotle in Panera, which all did fundraising events at their restaurants. So I'm just going to mention a few of the grants, because I asked Susannah, she's president, and she gets to say which are some of her favorites. The Hingham Tech Squad, which is going to be a new course that will be offered at Hingham High. They are paying for a permanent site license for Generation S, which is, has to do with the curriculum and operational resources that they'll need to run that class. They also have Tools for the 21st Century, which includes a thermal cycler, which provides DNA analysis, and a drying oven, which they use in chemical analysis. So they're kind of doing some cutting-edge things at the high school. Also, a new planer for the industrial tech. I mean, they really run the gamut, from technology to science to throwing wheels, which have done in the past, and they're doing actually pottering wheels again this year, supporting the Quiz Bowl team, the gardens at many of the elementary schools. So it's really a great effort on their behalf, and I'd like to thank them personally, myself, and on behalf of the school committee for all the work that they do and the fun things they bring to our school system. Thank you.
That's great, thank you very much. Okay. Questions or comments from the audience? Anything not on the agenda? Moving on to old business, 6.1. The Student Activity Agency accounts, we covered this last meeting in the first of two policy reviews. John can go into more detail about this. We're being in a position to vote this evening.
Yeah, this is the high school, the Student Activity Agency accounts. These are for the student funds that clubs and like provide checks to the principals. This policy really would have an account established in the middle school and the high school, and also for elementary schools, should they need an account whereby students, when they go on field trips and stuff, monies could be deposited. The policy sets a balance where the principal can manage that balance within the account. At the high school, it's $30,000; at the middle school, it's $15,000. That balance would be subjected, so basically, a student activity will occur, and these are student activities beyond our extracurriculars that are in our budget. This is actually student money, it all belongs to the students, but the principal ends up being the holder of these funds, and also has a checking account where she can write, he or she can write checks out to the organizations that the students want to do activities with. So the process would be for the principal to collect the monies from the students, maintain a balance of up to $30,000, and then they expend by writing individual checks to fund for the student activities that the student clubs are asking for. Those transactions could be tax-exempt under the school's tax-exempt certification, and then, in order to replenish the account, the principals would establish a warrant process, so they'd submit all the receipts for which they expended funds, they'd be submitted to this office, would process it similar to a regular payable warrant process, and then money would be transferred back into their account, thereby bringing their balance up to the total of $30,000, or $15,000, or $5,000. Now, since a high school is prone to some very large expenditures, whether they be for trips to foreign countries, or the, you know, during prom season, in the second half of the year, expenditures tend to be greater, so $30,000 is not really an adequate balance. So this policy would set that balance to be able to increase up to $60,000 in the high school during the months of February through June. But now also, should the high school principal think that that's not an adequate balance, and they could, in fact, write to the school committee and say, "Can I have an increase, a temporary increase to a higher amount," you know, in anticipation of some additional expenditures or a need for an additional balance. This process is in conformance with Chapter 71, Section 47. They recommend that all students, all schools have student activity accounts. Currently, we have student activity accounts, but we don't manage it through this process. So this would be a very good process and policy and process to implement. We had a policy in place, but we didn't have good processes in place. This is, it would represent a revision to an existing policy numbered 434, and the plan would be, with your approval, is we'd have this process implemented for fiscal 14.
I would just comment that you should ignore the note. When I asked that this be included in your packet, I said include the one that was in the other packet. Didn't know that it would be included with a note on it, but this is not yet accurate, so just ignore that note.
John, no recommendation to increase the middle school from 15?
Not at this time, because the, you know, I did talk with the middle school principal and the high school principal, and they thought that these balances would work for them, you know, as they're detailed right now. And they, as we, you know, they do have the ability to increase the levels via a letter.
I'd like to make a motion that we act on the proposed Student Activity Fee Account Policy as recommended by the policy subcommittee that was in your packet last week.
I have a second.
Second.
I just took a look at it. There's a couple of instances where you use, just in terms of using a defined term, that this is going to be in the policy. So I think we just need to be consistent with how we refer to the entity. It's pretty much everywhere as school committee, so I think if we just define it at the beginning, and then there's one instance where it just says Committee, small c, so we need to just capitalize and put school in there, and then at the end, isn't it the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education? It's the State Department, right? It's not the Federal Department of Education?
Department of Elementary and Secondary.
At the end?
Yeah, we should make that D E S E.
D E S E, yeah. Department of Elementary and Secondary.
So you can, I brought this up.
Oh, good, thank you.
So I would just suggest those kind of non-substitute ads, essentially. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. New business tonight. We are pleased to welcome Jim Krikaldi, the Director of the Social Studies History Department, with a program review. Last time, I think, he was here, it was 2009. Before any of us were here.
That's a good point.
Yep.
Yes, we're on a four-year, I think, four-year cycle.
Well, I'm very pleased to have this opportunity to highlight our department this year, and actually for the last four years. So what I've done is put together a PowerPoint to highlight most of the things that you've had in the document I gave you earlier, and try to especially stress our strengths and where we want to go in the future and that type of thing, but also for the general public, just our goals and objectives. High expectations and equal access to curriculum opportunities for all students, and you've noticed through some of the curriculum guides I gave you, we try to stress essential questions, questions that are important, and sometimes require more than one answer and so forth. Integration of geography, economics, and other social sciences into the study of history. Very often, when kids are looking at causal effect and so forth, we try to stress political, economic, social, and cultural to tie it together in various ways. Historical reasoning, incorporating evaluation of sources, construction of casual relationships, balanced interpretations, comparative analysis. Civics education for the study of American history. I'll come back to this a little bit later. Current events in the democratic process are kind of weaved through all our courses, with highlighting, of course, our senior elective, which is American government, but civics education is not something that is just based on a course, but should be something taught in all grades, and from K all the way through 12, of course, and we're very conscious of that. Stress on the interaction connections between civilizations that create a global and interdependent community, and I think you'll notice of our curriculum, if you were to compare it with other school systems, you'll notice that this connection on other civilizations, a global approach, is much more than you'll find in many other communities, and I'll come back to that as well. Teachers that are knowledgeable and adept in wide repertoire of teaching techniques. As you know, a good part of my job is evaluation, and one of the things we look for, of course, is that wide range of student learning styles and so forth, and that's one of my primary goals, of course, and when I hire teachers as well, to try to assess if they have that repertoire or the ability to expand as well. And the standards reflectability of children for earliest elementary schools to learn the meaning of history and the methods of historians. And evidence, historical evidence, written documents, oral traditions, quantitative data, artifacts, art, and music. Briefly, about the elementary curriculum. One of the things we did in the last three years, starting in 2010, was revision of the curriculum grades, should be grades K through 5, actually. And one of the reasons we did this, we'll talk about it, is more about trying to also bring it up to date with the reading program. That's been one of the best ways, I think, to integrate history into the elementary level, but also give teachers a chance, because one of the things, as you know, our staff is changing so dramatically that, you know, I'll say to myself, "Well, we did that a while ago," then I realize, "Well, we have new people, so we have to kind of take a look at this again." And this was used by using a committee of teachers. The first year was K and 1 with those teachers involved. The second year, we did grades 2 and 3, and then this year, grades 4 and 5, which we completed in 2012. Needless to say, I'm sure you've heard about this, the impact of the Massachusetts Framework for English, Language Arts, and Literacy, which now, social studies, of course, is under that guise. I think a lot of the general public, they look at the title, they look at the title, and they wonder, "Where's history, of course?" And we're very much a key component of this, as I'll mention later tonight. And along with that, we're looking for greater reliance on the trade books with historical themes. This is, as I said before, trying to work it in with the reading program, and this is, I think, one of the most effective ways to teach history and to make kids aware of historical content at the early elementary level. You have a, in your packet, you have a detailed sheet on the, it's in the appendix, on the scope and sequence. But what I did here was break it down into sort of like kind of a general group. You'll notice that most of the categories you have do fit into this. It's geography, family, groups, and citizenship. It's one of the first sheets in the appendix, scope and sequence. And if you look at grade 1, it's basically the same format. Groups working together, that's a key theme, citizenship, of course. Second grade, and again, obviously, building tiered up in terms of opportunities and grade level and so forth, sophistication. And when you get to grade 3, you'll notice history becomes a kind of a key component. And this is where we also introduce Hingham History, and the Wampanoahs is Native American Tribe we focus on and so forth. So this is also the first grade where they get a textbook, per se. Up to this point, they're using kits primarily, and it's teacher-developed materials. And then we get to 4th and 5th, of course, you can see very much more content-based. 4th grade is really basically regions of the US, but we do have a unit on Canada, Mexico, and China. This goes back to the mass frameworks. In social studies, things look like they're coming, and then things change rather dramatically sometimes, but basically, this was aligned with the mass frameworks through much of the, I would say, like 19, around 2000, 2010, and so forth. Now, South School, as you know, does a great China unit, much more than the other schools, and that's a school project. That's something that South is very proud of, and they developed that on their own, and our curriculum complements it. But I remember when I first became department head, that was an issue. Are we all supposed to do the giant China unit and so forth in the other schools? And I said, "No, we have a China unit," and then if one school wants to go way beyond that, because it's part of their interdisciplinary program, that's fine, and some of you may have been involved, have seen the great job they do in South with China. But that, per se, we're involved with it, but that's really their gem, and I don't take any credit for the show they put on, which is really quite good. Role of the elementary teacher. Obviously, if you're familiar with the overall curriculum, the curriculum guides, which we put together, they're always, I always rely heavily on the teachers themselves. I don't try to download on them my own views on things. We put, we come together, we reach a sense of consensus on what it should be, and when they're on board, then they share it with the principal and with their fellow staff members, but they should then be familiar with that curriculum. And the implementation of that grade level with the objectives and so forth. It's their job to implement that. And of course, the instruction is, we hope differentiated and relevant assessments based on their own training and what is suitable for that grade level. But one thing we've always pushed, and this is something I think other Hingham schools in general should take a lot of pride in, is writing, and whether it's the English Department or right across the board, and we expect expository writing in the social studies as well. And they may consult with the director of social studies, and occasionally, I'll have a social studies elementary committee put together when it's needed. Now, when we were doing the revision of the curriculum, I was using committees based on just the grade level, and it was just grade teachers and first-grade teachers, et cetera. This year coming, probably, I may try to get an elementary committee made up of a first-grade teacher, second-grade, et cetera. Depends on when we need it and what's the best way to put it together. Role of the principal and myself, basically, the implementation of that curriculum is really the principal. When the principal goes through and is observing a teacher, he or she wants to see how the curriculum is being taught as part of an evaluation process, you know, they have that curriculum guide to go by and so forth. I do not evaluate the elementary school teachers. You know, I'll go through, walk-throughs and so forth like that, may consult with them, but I'm not involved in the evaluation process. But the curriculum guide, which I do have a hand in, is really the tool for the principals and vice principals to use if that's something they're looking for when they're going through a classroom, they want to observe and evaluate a social studies lesson. Resources, that's my primary job, and, for example, this year, once we just mentioned about trade books, I put a big emphasis on the budget this year on the elementary, more so than secondary, at this time, because if we're going to talk about we want to have more trade books and implement it with the reading program, we have to deliver the books and deliver the material. So that's a big plus, and I did receive more substantial funds in that area, so I'll be following through on that. Also, the 5th grade textbook, it's not a new addition, but very often, it doesn't make sense to keep on buying the old editions anymore either. So what I'm trying to do now, if we have a new class come up, I want to buy the up-to-date edition of that book, because often it comes with ancillary materials that can be used online and so forth. So, but the resources is my primary job, and once again, I rely heavily on what the teachers need. And that's where that social studies committee can once again comes in. Very often, individual teachers will call me as well what they need, and it works that way, too. Secondary program, middle school, really traditional, really. 6th grade, world civilization, 7th grade, world geography, and this is a little bit different. It's traditional, 8th grade, US history. A lot of schools have changed that recently, I'll come back to that in a moment. But I look at this, and I think one of my primary goals is that when the kids are learning about world civilization, the world geography, or US history, that this grade level, this is what I hope the enthusiasm of knowing history really kind of comes to as well. Yeah, there's writing assignments, and they're learning content and so forth, but, you know, the interest level of kids and the enthusiasm of kids at that age is really a real plus, and you want to try to tap that, tap into that as much as possible. How much factual material they'll remember, I'm not sure, but if they enjoyed the history and it's something they, you know, they want to pursue, I think that's really important. And obviously, it's a lead-in to the high school. To what extent should our middle school be prepped for high school? You know, there's all two philosophies out there, middle school versus junior high, and definitely 8th grade, I think, is, if you see how it's set up and so forth, is sort of like a transition grade to prepare them for the high school. One other thing before I move on about the geography. One of the things I find most rewarding about the geography, it's not just about maps, of course, it's really a current events course. I was in a geography class this year, and they were studying the Arab-Israeli conflict, and they were doing point-of-view and pro-Israeli cartoon, anti-Israeli cartoon, and that's the neat thing about geography. Here are kids in 7th grade, and they're really up on current events type of stuff, and I thought that was really so rewarding, be able to go home and talk about that kind of stuff. And that's why geography, even at the high school level, if it was something you could offer, it's really an exciting course, because it just, you know, you don't get caught down, you don't get caught up in the content, you know, like chronological content so much, and therefore, you can really get into the topics like that. So there's a lot of, when they study Mexico, they're looking at the current problems in Mexico, the drug cartels and so forth, so it's really neat to see at that level kids handling issues like that, and geography makes that possible. High school, 9th grade, world history 1, two years of world history, and as you know, we have an AP world course, 10th grade, 11th grade, US, then the 12th grade electives. Now, a few years ago, when MCAS looked like it was coming on the horizon, I remember my first department meeting, 20 years ago, I told my staff, "We have to get ready for an MCAS test." It hasn't happened yet. Okay? It never happens the way things are going. But they had, they even had practice tests, they had a world history test, and schools started to change the curriculum, and then they dropped it, which was just like a waste of money, you know? So I just kind of kept things the way I thought they should be, and because the MCAS was going to be US history, most of the schools in the area now did two years of US history. What they've done is teach US history in 10th and 11th, and they push world history into 8th and 9th. And I just feel that world history is too important to downplay in the high school, and so we're one of the few schools that only have one year of US history as a course. And it doesn't mean we don't cover US history. When you're in the 10th grade, a good part of world history, as you know, is American history, so it is covered, but I think, and I've been backed by Dodd and Helen on that, so I'm very happy about that, that we've been able to do that. When we do 10th grade world history, for example, 10th grade, they're into the 20th century early, World War I, World War II, it's not at the end of the year, like maybe you have it and you're in school, and then after 1945, we do a topical approach, so the kids get right up to date on post-9/11 stuff, and they're doing that in world history, and of course, US history comes in to play that way as well. So I'm really proud of our world history approach. It's unusual, it's not like most other schools, and it seems to be working pretty well. And then we have a traditional US history course in 11th grade, and that's the AP US, which is new in a sense. Some of you may realize that we used to have an American Studies program, which in many ways, philosophically, I liked, it was team taught with English. For various reasons, in some cases, guidance felt that the kids, because it was American Studies, they weren't getting credit for an AP course on their records, things like that, and also, it was just hard to really coordinate the two classes, it just wasn't working, meshing as well as I would have liked, I think. So this is our first year, I think, yeah, that we now have AP US. Last year was, last year was the first year, now it's AP US. And then we have the different electives, of course. Notice, I think, we're in, for our department, we do have an AP in 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade. 10th grade, by the way, because your 10th grade is, these are supposed to be college courses, college tests, we are very selective with the 10th grade. I think it's important that they're very young, and we don't want them to have a bad experience in an AP course, like way over their head and so forth, it should be a pleasurable thing, so we invite kids to take that. However, 11th grade, it's pretty much open enrollment. And 12th grade, AP European, it's the, I call it the breathing test. If they're breathing, they can take the course. And if they say no to nobody, so it's not wide open that way.
And we teach us that.
And so we got a lot of Level 3 students, upper standard students, who take the course, and they do fine, okay? But 10th grade, I think, like I said, I'm very happy kind of being a little bit guarded with that, so that kids don't get, unusual is one section of AP World, which seems to be working well. And I was pleasantly surprised and pleased to see a lot of parents haven't really pushed that much. They seem to be taking our advice, you know, in terms of, you know, we have an advanced 9th grade, I mean, 10th grade course, and that's fine, too, and there's nothing wrong with that, and so there hasn't been as much of a parental push as I thought we might have for the AP 10th grade. The last two courses there, they're in our program, but right now, they're not being offered, but I always like to include them because they're not being offered just because I don't have the staff right now. They're very important parts of our curriculum. International Affairs speaks for itself. The seminar is a kind of a neat approach, which I introduced a few years ago, and that is, a teacher could teach anything they wanted for a semester, but it could be a real in-depth course. So for example, Ms. O'Connor taught civil rights course, the whole semester just on the civil rights, and it allowed the students to really kind of focus on one particular issue. Another teacher, a couple of years later, and let them keep it for a few years, no sense, you know, putting all that work into a course, and then, you know, you don't get a chance to teach it again. But it was understood, maybe every three, four years, we'd give another teacher an opportunity. We had a teacher do a course on philosophy, for example. One thing I'd like, if we get it back, I'd love to see a course on the Hingham history, for example, that would be a great place to put that in. But anyways, I think with more money and hopefully in the budget next year, we maybe can do something with that and get it back, you know, with more staff. Major changes. Well, textbooks, we have finished the adoption of the 9th and 10th grade, that's one thing. We use the same textbook for 9th and 10th grade, it's just, you know, we're just studying different parts of the book. different parts of the book, it works out fine. It's a pretty thick and hefty book, but one of the things is that the book is also online. So our goal was that they could either leave it at home, or leave it at school, and the books also would last longer that way. The way it works, however, you have to buy a class set of hardcover of books to be able to get the book online. Unless, some schools now, they have a system where if you buy laptops or something of that nature, then you can just buy the book online, and there's no hard copy. But we're not in that situation, so we do have hard copies. History Alive, fifth grade, we do a lot of history, Hingham history in the fifth grade. And this is, this is, of course, US history, but we also work in a lot of Hingham history, as we do with the third grade on that. And one of my goals for the future, of course, too, is work more closely with the Hingham Historical Society. I met with Suzanne Buchanan last week to talk about different ways. We had a department meeting at the Historical Society a couple of years ago, they just took us on a tour of the archives they have, and it's just so exciting to see the materials they have. And we wanted to see if we can put together certain units using some of these activities, facsimiles, obviously, in most cases, but that's something, one of my goals for the future. Technology in the classroom, one of these teachers are using, a lot of now is Edmodo. It's sort of like Facebook for educators, where you can basically put your assignments on, you know, this webpage, and you can have journals up here, you can have, it can be a journal where you just read it, and the student or the whole class can be involved, you can put up a question, and kids can respond online and so forth. And I think the majority of the staff is now using this, and it's become very, very popular. And that was around four years ago. YouTube, same thing, a lot of teachers are using YouTube clips, because we have access to that now in the high school. I wouldn't be surprised if also, like, live interviews, especially, I think, with the new high, new middle school coming on board, with their tech, I'm sure we'll be able to have a lot more opportunities as well to connect with live classes and so forth. And I just mentioned the online textbooks and answer materials. This is, we're seeing much more of this, as I said, and even the fifth grade History Alive books, as I purchased them for the fifth grade starting this year, and Plymouth River is gonna get a complete set for all their students, and this will also be online. And next year, I'll try to finish it, maybe it'll take two years, I'm not sure, for all the schools. But the numbers are up at such a, to such a degree, that seemed the best place to start with Plymouth River, so. Major curriculum changes, well, curriculum guides have been revised. I gave you some samples in your packet, in elementary, middle school, and high school. And as I said, revision of the K through five social studies curriculum was completed as well since the last review. The AP US is new. Program strengths, I can't speak enough of the staff we have. They're always taking courses, but also, after school, you'll see them in the rooms, they work, some of them stay late, some come early. It's a really competent department. They're all the age of my children, which, I'm not sure if that's good or bad, but I kind of like it, actually. But they are, I'm very proud of them all, okay? We do obviously support Hingham's mission statement and student expectations. You'll notice on the student summaries, curriculum guides, you can see the student expectations at the end, and that was something through NEAS that we used. And social studies, it does a good job with the mission statement as well. We're very much aware of that, through such things as character education, for example. Common planning time, Paula Gerard McCann, a few years ago, went to do the common planning time for each department, just so happens our planning time is G period, end of the day. And now and then, we have a problem with Erica Deason, Erica Pollard, who teaches China, for example, sometimes, like, she's not free that period, but most of, most of our teachers are free at the same time. And not only are they very creative, but one of the things I noticed, too, is sometimes I'll observe around the same time, a couple of classes and the same thing, and I'll see the same activity being used, but being tweaked each kind of in its own way, which tells me a lot that they are also sharing materials, which I like. And so it's a very cooperative department that way. When I mentioned, too, about their competence, I think they're very much involved in the school. I think every teacher in the department, if he's not, or she's not coaching, they're an advisor to a club, student consult, and, you know, they really have a presence in the high school and the middle school. Coordination of the K through twelve program, one of the things I find, monthly, we have meetings with other department heads in the area, and I'm always surprised that one of the few department heads that's K through twelve. And when I was hired many years ago by Ruth Butterfield, she was K through twelve, and that was in the seventies. And to me, it just is common sense, that you can look at the whole program, you kind of coordinate things, the high school knows what the middle school is doing. And a lot of schools, it's not that way. The middle school, high, elementary school, nothing, they don't know what they're doing. I do see directors who are now sixth through twelve, that's becoming more common, okay? But it's very rare to have a director who's K through twelve, and it just seems so obvious. I'm always kind of shaking my head at that, very few. And I think that's been a real plus of the Hingham school system, that long before my time, they saw the foresight of that kind of a position. Role of interdisciplinary activities, you know, very, like I said, with the reading program, that's just one very clear example of how we try to be involved with English. We're putting together our summer read right now, and we're trying to roll it around with the English major themes as well, so we try to do that. It's something we need to do more on, but very often, like, English teachers, world literature, ninth and tenth, just like we do world history, so it's coordinated that way, and so it's, that's a real plus. Growing use of technology, teachers are keeping up with that, and obviously, with the new school, middle school, that really opens up all kinds of potential. And as I said before, very strong curriculum that emphasizes global interdependence, and that's obvious from our ninth and tenth grade program, for example. Up-to-date texts, we're pretty good on that. And maps, that's always an ongoing thing, big debate, teachers, they want maps, or do they rely on the computer? And I still feel that a lot of teachers, and I feel this way, too, it's hard to replace the map, you can just pull down and show the kid when the, that student has a question. They're very aesthetically pleasing, and to me, it's easier than technology, that's one example, I think where technology still hasn't dominated. But, I mean, there's some neat things you can do with geography, don't get me wrong, there's some neat programs where you can, like Google Earth and so forth, you can blow up historical maps, but it's still a process. And I find a lot of teachers are still asking they want maps. Typical US world map combo with a globe or something like that, and I can see the Updated facilities, the high school, of course, is not too much of a problem, I think our class size is fine, and I'll come back to that in a minute, but obviously, the middle school, and if you look at what's happened with South and East and so forth, I think our system is going pretty well, and social studies benefits from that, of course. These last three, I want to kind of go back, emphasize a little bit, the class size, the authentic assessment part, and student achievement. Class size, you can see, it's pretty reasonable, I guess. I mean, everyone always likes to have smaller classes, I guess it's a matter of a debate, but some, you can see the range at some classes, on the average. It becomes sometimes more of an issue, like, I think with our APs, like, the APs are large, like, they're, have two AP year olds, sixty kids, thirty in a class, so it kind of limits what you can do in terms of Socratic seminars, for example, or sense of that nature. So I think that's where we feel that the crunch, the class size is really an issue, should those classes have so many students? When you compare this to other schools, it looks pretty good in many cases. That's the high school. And you'll notice the range, sometimes, it's like, look at Shawn Nugent, yes, from twenty in a class to twenty-seven. We prefer, obviously, less than twenty-seven, but everything is under thirty, okay? I gave you a definition of this, and I think this has always been very important since I've been in a director, that our curriculum should be driven by themes, not the textbook. Not that we'd do it this way, but I mean it philosophically, I wouldn't care if every student in my class had a different textbook, you know, because it's the themes that drive the course and not the textbook, and that helps us not get bogged down into, you know, having to cover every single thing. So you'll notice in the curriculum guide, sometimes in italics, we'll have what those key themes are, and that's what drives our essay questions sometimes. There's no pat answer, they deal with significance, the big picture questions, and hopefully stimulate other important questions about that topic. Okay? Interdisciplinary, one of the things I like the most is when students, they'll come to me and they're learning something in French or Spanish history, they're in their language class, but obviously, their knowledge of French or Spanish history is a key component to that, that language class, and so that's really neat when we see that happening. And we should be tapping higher order thinking skills and problem solving skills, and this is becoming more and more important with the park exams and the type of exams that will be coming down the road with the new frameworks. And they should be tasked attempted by all students. Essential questions should be a question, like, why was Luther successful? I think every student should be able to answer that to a certain degree, based on their ability. Why did, why did the North win the Civil War? And the process is as important as the product. So very often, on our term papers, you'll notice that there's step-by-step in terms of how to take, take notes, how to organize their notes and so forth, the process is a very important part of what we do. Document-based questions is something we stress a great deal. It's, these are all on the AP, quite, what it is, you get a series, students get a series of documents, they have a question, and they have to answer the question based on the documents. So they have to analyze the documents, in some cases, who's writing this, what kind of a document is it, is it a poster, propaganda, is it a letter, a diary? And even though the AP stressed this, to me, this is one of those things, it's like basic learning, it's like a lifelong learning skill that we all should have, how to analyze documents. So to me, regardless of AP, it's something that all students should be able to handle. Open response essays, and then we also have the research paper. You also receive in your packet a breakdown by year and so forth, how we handle this. One of the things I'll mention, I'm thinking of a portfolio where a student, at the end of the year, would take their best writing, could be a document-based question, their essay, and their, and their paper, and this will be passed on to their next teacher the next year, so we can see, you know, how the kids progressed, and we're in the process of, you know, trying to work on that in a manageable way. And these would be the three things, because all our students are doing these, these would be the three things that we'd want to pass on. And I've seen teachers, for example, in one class, having the kids work on a document-based question, and she handed out to them a document-based question they'd done the year before, which I thought was neat, and they could look at that and say, "Now, how did you do it last year?" And, you know, "How can we improve on that?" Or "What did you do right last year that you need to continue doing for this assignment?" And that's one of the ways I like to see that used. Enrollments, by the way, let me say, in terms of social studies, we're at a disadvantage with English, and because we don't have any real assessments, as you know, there's no MCAS exam scores we can use for science or in English. So the only scores we have are the AP and the SAT twos. A lot of you don't take a lot of SAT history, so, you know, I'll talk about how we're gonna maybe try to change this for next year, but basically, our AP scores, as you can see, do very well with the rest of Hingham High School APs. You can see R three in shaded areas, and this is the enrollment, so our enrollment's pretty good. Maybe you want to just look at the European history, because that's a senior one, and the rest, I believe, are mostly seniors, too. Obviously, US history and world, I'm not sure, AP bio, is that juniors? Seniors, yes, so it is seniors, so that might be more of a indication. And if we pull them out, you can see the scores have been traditionally good. And right up till now. Now, percent of grade three or above, once again, our scores are very, very excellent. And I would say that the vast majority, it's really fours and fives, the threes are minority. Most of our students get fours and fives. And once again, if you go back to 2004, it's been a trend, it's been going on for a long Now, we didn't always have AP US, but, so you notice, like, none, 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 that's because the course wasn't offered in those years. And the US history, it was under American Studies, but kids were still taking the exam, because we felt the American Studies did prepare them just as well for an AP exam as a so-called AP course. And this shows how Hingham compares to Massachusetts and the national, this is just based on this year, 2012, and once again, we do quite well. I also get the sense, although I have no hard data on this, that when I talk to colleagues on the South Shore, I think we do very well on the South Shore as well. I don't think there's many schools that would do better than us. And that's advanced placement demeanor. So you can see it is much higher than just a three. Now, when we get the SATs, once again, they do very well, but you'll notice, under 2012, only thirteen kids took it. So most of the kids tend to take a biology or an English when it comes to SAT twos. That's a little bit more graphic. These are the only scores we have, really, you know, on the national level compared to department. US history, the kids who take it, obviously, they, they take it for a reason, they're good in history and they enjoy it, so it kind of comes through here. Program concerns, sufficient staffing, as I said, the class size isn't really, I don't think, bad by, especially what we've gone through the last, you know, five years and so forth. But for me, a concern is to have another staff member, like I said, to bring back some of those elective courses. And also, like, I teach two AP courses, so if I wind down and pull myself out of those, that would open up, that would mean we'd need more, more, more teacher, more classes being taught by someone else as well. This is always a problem, this is, textbooks go up every year, just fact of life, and that's why hopefully, some of the electronic deals will help us, but it's always a concern, the cost of textbooks and materials. And then the statewide assessments, I don't know if it's gonna happen or not. Like I said, I think what's gonna happen is that the, we'll be, we'll play a key role in the literacy, the English arts and literacy exam, which, but I don't know if you'll ever see a social studies assessment in Massachusetts like they have in New York. I've been waiting twenty years for that, and I just don't, don't see it happening. But it's a real concern, because as much as I don't really like that kind of a test, a lot of schools, I haven't felt this in Hingham, but schools are concerned that the towns will look upon social studies as not as important as the other subjects. So in some schools, they've actually eliminated social studies teachers at the middle school and asked a science teacher or math teacher to pick up a load, because it's not as important, because there's no assessment test. And so that's kind of a sad commentary, I think. That's why some social studies people are really pushing the state that we need an assessment so that we're valued as much as, you know, English and science and so forth. But I don't know if you'll see it happening. I mentioned this already, one of the things I want to move towards is this sort of like a portfolio assessment, which may also play a key role later in terms of how we may assess And I just mentioned, we don't have a lot of assessments, this would be one way for in-house to assess our students. Also, need to work more with increased interdisciplinary connections, I've talked with Lenny Silver about this, in terms of just having vertical, vertical and horizontal workshops with teachers, English and history, to try to work on common themes and so forth. Middle school electives, I've, I'd like to see a middle school elective, if it's ever possible, I think that, like, the current events would be a perfect example of that, and if it can be worked into the curriculum there, at some point, I think that would be beneficial, give kids another option. And the high school electives, I've already talked about a couple of times. One thing tied in with the electives, however, too, is, like I said, I really want to see us do more with Hingham, the town of Hingham, especially as they, such a rich town, history as you know, and, you know, it's just, it's just a great opportunity for us, and we, I think we do a lot, but I think there's so much more we could do. And that's why working with Suzanne Buchanan and maybe Mark Collins and so forth, we can... we can, we do a community service component too, so there's another example. We had one girl who worked for the, um, um, Hingham Cemetery this year, and she was taking photographs of, uh, cemetery tombstones and stuff like that. So there are kids individually doing stuff like that, but I'd like to see if we can pull it more into the curriculum, that type of thing. And, uh, bring those back. I meant to, just one other thing here, this is, um, if I can pull it back, yeah. American political systems, we do have an elective, but personally, I think it should be a requirement for every student in Hingham to take a, grab an political system, a civics course in their senior year before they graduate. That would be my, to others, I, I just think it's, uh, part of being what a citizen is, and the senior is the perfect place for that. I don't know if it'll ever happen, I don't know, but, um, I, that's what I think, it should be a requirement. So I'm plugging this right, right now, dot. I didn't tell you about it ahead of time either.
[laughing] You've all heard of the-
Didn't that draw from somebody who were other electives though?
It depends how much money you give them. Uh, the school committee-
So we have four years till we respond to it?
That's right, yeah, not all at once, not all at once. This is the big thing right now, of course, the new frameworks for English, Language, Arts and Literacy. And, um, these are the two components that really reflect history. And I think the general public needs to realize that, as certainly our teachers do. And, and this is a quote from that document. And so we do have a very specific and important role in the assessment process. And I think within the test, as it becomes developed, um, these are the skills that they'll be learning in social studies, which will be very important for their student's So the implementation of the mass frameworks for English arts and literacy and educator evaluation framework is a very key thing that all the, all the teachers have been working on and directed so far this year, of course. And so, um, vertical, horizontal teaming and curriculum development in this area is very important, I think, to get the teachers ready. And we're working on a grade Y assessment of student portfolios in the future, may help. But, um, SMART goals, every teacher is supposed to, to create their own SMART goals, as well as administrators. And my SMART goals for next year, basically, are tied in with this. That's why it's my direction in the future. First off, create a document-based question assessment for grade 11 US history. This will include a pre and post, pre, and should say, include a pre and post-test assessment, okay? And a grading rubric. And this will be the assessment for the 11th grade, it'll be through social studies. So I introduce this to the staff in May, this May. Hopefully summer workshop time in June, and training teachers on a new rubric by October. And then, student learning goal would be to use that assessment and actually assess a document-based question assessment for students. Probably on a scale of zero to nine, I'm not sure, it'll be how the state would want these evaluated, but, um, give a pre-test in October, and a post-test in April, 2014. And it'll be a, basically on a document-based question. And that's my goal for next year, hopefully. This is, uh, one of the things that, um, social studies is responsible for, for the And, um, conclusion. Like I said, we have an outstanding staff, and, uh, I'm very proud of this dress we put on, critical thinking and writing, and I hope that will continue, and, uh, our department will just get stronger over the years. I just wanna mention also, um, one of our outstanding teachers, Andy Hoy, is leaving us, before you know it, he's gonna be the new director of social studies in Duxbury. So he's a real loss for us, but, uh, like I said, he can't be replaced, I'm going away. He did get a new teacher. But nevertheless, it's good for him, um, but-
Only because he lives in Duxbury, right?
Lives close to Duxbury. But he'll be a good, he'll be a fine director, but he is a loss for us. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim, thanks very much. Uh, I would just, um, kind of echo the, the comments you made about, you know, finding a way to increase, um, you know, addressing Hingham history. Um, I think, you know, particularly if you look back at the, um, presentation that Mark Cullings did in, in April about the, uh, historical sighting in the Hingham Heritage Museum renovations that are underway and the plans they have for those archives, I think it just creates a wonderful opportunity to kind of partner with the high school in particular, um, on projects, on seminars. I encourage you to put those staffing requests in your budget for next year, and hopefully those are the things that we can look at and, and discuss, cause I think it's a, it's an important, um, part of the program. Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
When you talked about the interdisciplinary interaction with the English department in particular, um, I would, as a parent, and my experiences, I would appreciate if you could study the writing terminology, strategies, and how the two departments communicate to the students, because the English department has their very specific program, which has been very successful, and you have yours. And sometimes they're not in sync, and, or with social studies, there's more analysis of something, and that could be described a little bit more clearly so that the kids aren't getting, thinking they should do it the English version.
Yeah.
And, um, and my daughter has a great English teacher this year, is very into making them become great writers, and he gives them the opportunity to sit with him and rework a paper so that, and then we'll award them a, a better grade. And that has really made an impact on allowing her to learn more about her writing. And if that could be, um, implemented with social studies too, it takes a lot of time from the teacher, which I greatly appreciate, but just something to think about-
Sure. That's why I think, I mentioned that, if we have some vertical, horizontal teaming, that would be one of my goals, and that would be exactly the type of issue that we should be discussing.
Great.
Good, good point.
Thank you.
Dennis?
Well, yeah, I was just gonna say, I told Mr. Kirkaldi, uh, when we were chatting before the meeting, that, uh, while both my wife and I were always interested in social studies and history, uh, they, both our kids had, uh, Mr. Kirkaldi as the, uh, their penultimate teacher, I guess, in, in high school. Uh, and, uh, when my daughter became an art history major, I asked her how she decided to do art history, and she said, well, you know, when I had Mr. Kirkaldi, he really made it come alive, how art and history combine and work. So she, uh, not only was an art history major, then studied decorative art, is now working with vintage jewelry, uh, as her career, so, uh, had a real impact. And my son, uh, also majored in history with his, uh, concentration in, uh, central and eastern Europe, and, uh, now lives in Dushan Bay Tajikistan. The global thing was a little much, I think, but, uh, but, you know, so I think just along, following up on what Dot does, read the letter about the, uh, woman out in California, you know, clearly teachers know they can have an impact on kids' lives, and if you know a way to get our son back within three time zones, it would be really helpful. But no, thank you very much, it's a little staff.
It's not my responsibility to bring him back.
Andy?
Uh, Mr. Kirkaldi, the Kirkaldi, um, I think you underestimate your strengths, your staff, your little coy there about how well our, our children score. Now granted, some cynics might say, well, we're teaching to a test, but it's a good test, who cares? But when you look at the world history at a 4.7 mean, and the US history at 4.0, and European history at 4.0, I think those are outstanding. And I know we've talked before, when we've been up to high school, where it's not uncommon for our group of AP kids, that if there's hypothetically, as you saw up on the chart, 22 of them in there, to have either all 22, or 21 of the 22, get a perfect five. So I think that's very good, so I do think your staff is very good. I also think, now I'm, I'm spoiled, I'm on the school committee, so I get my, like, private book, I get to see that. You have good information on the website there about the classes and about the, um, you know, the different curriculums at the middle school and the high school. I'm one of those people who believe in pushing information, you obviously have that on PowerPoint. I'd love to see you blast that out to the entire district, so they can have this. I, I'd love you to see people to have this, a whole thing on the website, just because I think this is a good resource, it goes into detail, it talks about how many teachers we have, and I think this is a very good resource to continue to push that information. So, I don't know how you get it on the website, I don't know how you blast it out to everyone.
I'm sure we can do it, that's no problem.
But I'm sure people would actually like to have that as a resource, but thank you again.
Thank you.
I would reiterate what Andy said, I, when I read this, the beginning introduction was exactly what I've been wondering, and I've experienced some of it, so I, it made sense to me. But I think it's really great to be, have the parent access to these descriptions, because-
I don't think that'll be difficult to do.
And even just to direct them to the website, that it's there, would be excellent.
I'll look into that immediately, that's a good idea.
Uh, Jim, question for you, um, thank you very much, this is great. And I know we've had a lot of talk in the past year about sort of a global approach, we have the Global Certificate Program. So for me, and I, I know it's, it was a budget kind of buster, that international affairs went away, but, you know, how realistically, how close do you think we are to getting a course like that, which seems very relevant to what we're teaching our kids back?
Well, on one hand, you could say, we could offer it, but I'm, I'm very concerned about the class size of our core subjects, as you can see, they're on the cusp of being, you know, upper 20s. So I, that was my first priority. And I think maybe next year, like you, like you said, Ray, certainly I'll put in for that, and, um, if I get the extra FTEs-
How many people do you think you need in order to manage the class size, recognizing you do have a incoming ninth grade, that's probably larger than the outgoing 12th grade?
Yeah.
But to, and to establish a class like that, you know, one of these classes?
I don't think, probably another person, another staff.
You also have to think of what, it would be separating the kids differently.
Yeah.
And so that it isn't always about, uh, how many kids for this, it's then what does it leave behind, and does it leave some of those classes?
Right, but it would be an elective.
So I certainly would advocate for, you know, how many kids would sign up, and then make decisions based upon that, um, and where we need, uh, where we need additional step. But we have a number of electives, and that slices the pie very thinly, first of all, and secondly, often creates singletons. And so then you cause greater problems in some of the core subjects, which is what Jim just alluded to.
Right, but perhaps after a year, you might have multiple courses of the elective, if, you know, if-
But then something else might have to go.
Perhaps, but, or you hire, rehire another teacher. But anyway, I, I'd be interested in seeing that, uh, to the curriculum, and please come and see me in November and December, when we're talking about budgets.
Good, thank you.
Anything else? No? Any questions from the audience? Yes, Jim, you gotta come up here, please, Jim.
Oh, okay. Who's, who's on here?
I would hope so.
Uh, can I just call you?
At the podium, if you could state your name and, and address, please.
I'm Jim Watson, 291 Rockland Street, Hingham. Great presentation, and I was just very pleased to hear you mention using more music, because there's a lot of folk music that's very narrative, and can really help. You know the song, "The Vicar of Brigh"?
No.
It's about a churchman who's determined to keep his position, and he changes politics with every revolution and every, and he finally says, no matter what king may reign, still I'll be vicar of Brigh, sir. But he goes through about 200 years, it's an implausible history for one person, but it's so many references, this revolution, that, that king. And, and I always think it'd be a great thing to use in a final exam. You know, here's the song, what are the references?
We've used a lot of music, I didn't mention that, but we do, um-
No, you said that in passing.
Yeah.
And, and I keep thinking one good project would be to do a companion of, of, uh, mostly English language folk music, based on the various wars, the Curry recruit, the Crimean War. You know, and it's fun, kids enjoy it, they enjoy the songs, they just say, damn it, I just learned something too, you know, so it might-
Thank you. I, I do have, um, I put together, I, I call it the AP European Songbook, has over about 150 songs, then I also have the greatest AP European love songs. And, uh, trying to sell those, but, uh, you know, it is, it's interesting that you mention that, because, uh, music is, uh, very rich, it's another form of document, uh, a primary document that we use. And, uh, and you write about art, also arts, I found it, um, to me, it's another life skill. They can understand art, uh, they'll enjoy that the rest of their life, and usually history, if they can understand why a painter is painting a certain way, well, that, that helps them understand and appreciate it much more. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thanks for the opportunity, I, I appreciate it very much.
Great, so moving on, uh, 7-2, uh, is a proposed increase to the athletic, the high school athletic fee, uh, for the next school year. This is something that was on our agenda last time, uh, was deferred because there was only five of us in particular, Andy wasn't here. Um, Andy, do you wanna talk about this one?
Sure, thank you, Ray. Bottom line, no one likes fees, and we always struggle with them all the time. The good news is Hingham Public School System as a district does not have any district-wide fees. We don't have a bus fee, we don't have a technology fee, we don't have other fees that I'm sure that exist in other districts. We do have an athletic fee. We have an activity fee at the middle school. But we did raise the fee three years ago, from 175 to 300. I know no one, again, as I said, no one likes to raise fees, I know Dr. Gall is always very sensitive about the ability for people pay. But we did have a discussion, and we like to have a lot of discussion, and we're proposing a small increase from 300 to 325. And what we voted on three, in unanimously, three to zero in our discussion, it was a lengthy discussion, uh, the policy subcommittee recommends the full sub, the full school committee that we raise student athletic fees at Hingham High School to 325 for the first student with a 625 family cap, family cap for the 2013, 2014 school year. So, turn it over to you for discussion, or what do you wanna do next?
Is that your motion?
Uh, yes, we, I'd like to make the motion that the, the, uh, the policy committee, subcommittee recommend to the full school committee that we raise student athletic fees at Hingham High School to 325 for the first student with a 625 family cap for the 2013, 2014 school year.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Okay, in terms of discussion, do you have any backup on this?
What do you mean by back?
Um, what's the basis for the amount of the increase? What are other towns doing, benchmarking studies? If you recall, um, one of the first votes that you and I took when we came on three years ago was to raise this fee from 175 to 300.
Correct.
There had been a lengthy discussion leading up to that throughout the entire previous year that I sat in the audience and witnessed, there was a lot of discussion about bus fees, about other fees, um, and, and there was a great deal of research done with respect to the athletic fee and what the, um, reasoning was for increasing it, um, the amount, um, that was, was proposed and, and ultimately voted. And particularly, I think, there was concern about it, um, because the increase was, uh, being instituted after the budget had closed, uh, for the year, which is where we find ourselves in, in, in the position now. So I ask if, you know, just, just in terms of substantiating, why $25?
Sure. The, in terms of after the budget closes, obviously that is nothing, something we try to do. I think if people have watched any sort of Hingham television, they've seen the school committee at numerous meetings this past year with the Fields Project, so it's not like we were trying to circumvent anything. Since I've been on policy now for four years, I've always been a strong advocate of doing small increases, and I voted that way. Our fees, our, our costs do go up 2% to 3% a year, whether it's, um, whether it's the coaches' salary, gasoline, other things like that, that does go up. So we're trying to keep it up in very small increments. We did not do, after we went from the 175 to 300, we gave a year break. Then last year, there was some discussion, maybe we should do a full review, including activity fees. The initial response, when you look at all the data, we are still substantially low, lower compared to other communities, but I think a lot of the main thrust was, we don't wanna get caught, or I strongly do not wanna get caught, in a situation where, and I've done this many times here with, um, when we do the kids in action fees, just because we were under, under-valued a few years ago, I don't wanna have all of a sudden jump and hit the kids in the future, so, all at once. So, 325 basically is 2.5% annualized over the last three years, 3% annualized over the last three years, and that's where we came up with the, uh, the amount.
You mentioned salaries is one of the, for coaches, that's covered in another part of the budget, though.
But the thing is, our costs as a department have gone up. So, that's some of the discussion, I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Was there any thought about the activ, what, what's your thinking on the activities fee at the middle school? Does that tie into this?
It's not, it's not addressed right now.
No, that, that has nothing to do with this.
The policy subcommittee had intended to do an overall review of all fees, um, the structure, the amounts, um, and that was, um, deferred, uh, for a couple of reasons. Um, and then, the discussion of the athletic fee kind of came out, um, and I, I actually initially didn't realize that it was gonna be discussed when, when it was first taken up- it was going to be discussed when it was first taken up again a couple months, a few months back, because I thought we were waiting for the full review to be done at the appropriate time.
Can I just chime in?
Yeah.
So, so last year, we were looking at doing a comprehensive review of athletic fees and comparing it to other communities. And I think we were sort of moving in that direction, but, you know, honestly, this year was a crazy year for everybody. And the amount of meetings that we've all attended to for this project just really occupied all of our, our free time. So we, we talked about doing this, and I did vote in favor of it at our, at our subcommittee meeting. At the time, John was not at our meeting because he had another meeting to attend. And Margaret, as well, was not, did not participate in this. And so upon further reflection, I don't think at this particular time, I think the timing is right to, to proceed with this. And I'd like, I'd like to throw out that I think the policy committee should go back and look at it in the coming year.
Obviously, that's, you know.
This is my personal opinion.
Yeah, that's fine. I think, you know, we've been trying to, I would like to have saw, saw this go up last year.
Mm-hmm.
But again, we thought about trying to do everything all at once. Again, there's really not great timing on anything.
Sure.
The, you know, we do have things that, there's so many factors that are going in. Now, we're lucky, this year, we have a healthy revolving account. A year and a half ago, we didn't have a healthy revolving account in athletics. So it's, you never know what's going to happen. John has mentioned plenty of times, the things, the, I'm going to use the word snowy, the snowy day things that hurt our, our revolving account is one our athletic teams do well. And you don't have to, you've had the boys, both boys lacrosse and baseball team made it to the state championship. Rales tennis made it to the state championship. Our rowing team actually made it to the nationals. So.
Track.
Track has always done well. So these are things that can easily affect the budget. Again, as I always said from the, from the get-go, this is nothing. We don't, we're very lucky. We live in Hingham where we do not have any district-wide fees. This is one that we have. It's a, it's a small amount, but I do think, based on some of the other revenue, based on more kids coming into the system, that it will be good to, you know, I don't, again, I don't want to pass on, but I think it's good to just maintain the course. And it's a small increment, so it's not going to affect anyone. It's not going from like 175 to 300. And then also, we did talk about, you know, we're going to continue to do the program review. And if we get the full program review, we did have discussion that that would not take place in 14 and 15, because this is for 13 and 14. So that would not take place 14 and 15, but perhaps take place in 15 and 16. So again, there would be a year breather.
Well, Margaret would be scheduled to come back for a program review a year from now, or April, May of '14, I think she was here in 2010. Yeah, I, I don't know. I think philosophically, I disagree with incremental increase, just for the sake of an incremental increase, year over year. My main concern with this is that initially, the concept was doing it as part of a comprehensive review, and that was deferred. I, I don't necessarily see why a $25 fee, which will probably amount to about $20,000, really would make a difference. Now, I see it as a little bit disingenuous to institute it after the budget's closed. I also think that after fall sports, signups have happened, and an email and other communications have gone out about what the current fees are. I think it would be, you know, a little uncomfortable to now say, oh, by the way, they're, they're increased. The other concern that I have is that Dr. Gallo is not in favor of doing this at this time.
She never said that at a meeting.
Well, I don't know if the question was asked, and I think at times.
She said clearly at meetings, though, she's always been very clear that she's never been a big believer in fees.
Uh-huh.
And she did say, if we have to do fees, she did say to me, because I've asked her many times, and we've had this discussion about it's better to do small incremental ones.
Sure.
Than the big ones.
Sure.
So.
But, but I will tell you that I, and she can speak for herself, obviously, but I don't believe that she supports this fee increase at this time in the manner in which it's being presented. I also have a concern that Margaret was not consulted or involved in the process of discussing the fee increase, what the basis for it was, the benchmarking data about other towns. And I think if you're going to increase an athletic fee, you certainly should involve your athletic director.
The, before we went, when we talked, when Carol was chair of the policy committee, she was the one who was trying to do the whole program review. Before she joined, there was discussion about keeping things going up at the, some sort of 2% rate. That's what we did, also with the Kids in Action. She joined, she wanted to be more aggressive, which is great, as she mentioned, we didn't get to it. But there was always discussion from the people prior, that, okay, not that we wanted to increase fees, and I've said that, but it's better to take a small bite each time, because things do go up. And so.
Yeah, I would just sort of chime in, since I obviously was not part of the discussion in previous years. I will say that the first couple of meetings that we had on policy was focused on the athletic fees. And I think the second one being in November, we got a lot of data through, just coincidentally, the Globe did a whole survey of the whole, of all the towns, northwest and south, in which we were able to get that data. We gathered some additional data on our own. It was clear that Hingham was toward the lower end of fees. And my feeling was that where this would be the third year without any increase, where we clearly have had increases over the years, that having a, I won't say nominal increase, but a relatively small increase, made sense, because I, frankly, I'm sympathetic to the idea of incremental increases, with the idea of looking at it comprehensively. And, you know, we did, I also have some concern about the idea of it coming later in the year, as you alluded to, although we did talk about it back in our January or February meeting, that we wanted to look at doing something with an increase. And then, of course, with the field situation and all the other things, particularly the users' policies, which we spent a lot of time on, weren't able to do that. So, as you mentioned, we're not talking about a huge amount of money. But I think it makes some sense to do something which does reflect the fact that clearly costs have gone up and that we are still relatively, relatively low. But, you know, again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not so strongly in favor that I'd be crushed if we didn't do this, but I personally think it would be the right way to go.
Yeah, I mean, you both now said costs have gone up. And let me be clear, I'm not against the concept of increasing the fee.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's something that we need to look at. But when you say costs have gone up, I'd like you to show me how the costs have gone up and which costs they are. That's when I say, where's the backup? That's what I'm asking for. When I say, where's the backup? I'm looking at benchmarking data. You say, other towns were the low end. Well, where's that list of the 20 towns and what their fees are?
Mm-hmm.
These are the things that we do when we look at a policy decision like this, particularly with respect to increasing fees. And I just think it's, I think it would be irresponsible for us to do it without being able to justify it appropriately. I also think, when we've been asking folks in this town to open up their wallets for this Fields Project, and they have, that nickel and diming them right now is not the right thing to do. That's just how I feel.
Mm-hmm.
To answer your question, again, on the, the costs in the contracts, all the coaches' size went up. Margaret is listed, our athletic director, Margaret Conde, is listed when John does the breakouts. We know she's going to raises each year.
But those come out of the budget in a separate item. They're not covered by the fees.
But anyways, when you say costs, we're looking at things as a total athletic program and the contribution there. No, I did not do a full Excel worksheet, but we've had sort of these discussions. Then also, when we've looked, yeah, I can produce the thing from the Boston Globe, and there was also another website that we used. It was, we have that, but, you know, we'd like you to believe that when we looked at this, I mean, we can go back and get it, but it was pretty, we were pretty low on most of them. And especially since we have a nice, we have a nice low family cap. I know John could speak to what, when he was at Norwell, I think it's like a $1,000 family cap. So compared to other schools, and especially in Syracuse. But, I mean, we don't have to spend, you know, I just wanted to answer your question.
Sure.
That I can produce that data, but it was pretty overwhelming.
Well, I, I do think that if the policy subcommittee is going to take something up, if the administration asks the policy subcommittee to take an issue up and to look into it, I think if we are going to consider it, we need to do a full study of it. We need to have backup. We need to have studies and benchmarking data. And, you know, you mentioned the Globe, just like Boston Magazine. Well, I don't know what the criteria used for that result was. So it could be a criteria, a set of criteria that maybe aren't relevant to us. I don't know the answer to that.
It was just a straight number.
May I be interested to hear if anybody else, down the other end of the table, if you have feelings one way or the other, whether you think it's the right time, the wrong time, you find it persuasive that, you know, we, it would be our third year without increases or not. Anybody have any thoughts? Any additional thoughts?
Well, just, just for the record, I, I wasn't here last, last meeting, and I didn't really, fully equipped to make a decision tonight. I wasn't sure I was going to make one, so.
We actually didn't talk about it last meeting. We deferred it because there was only five of us, and, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So this is the discussion. There really hasn't been any.
I thought I missed out or something.
No, no.
Thank you.
I guess I can understand that costs do go up over time, and especially gas for the buses, and more buses are being used because the teams are bigger. I am not completely up to speed on all the line items within the budget. But I do agree that you want to, if we're going to have a fee, it's easier on the parents to have small incremental increases than, I wouldn't want to have to go and, you know, five years, four years for another almost doubling of the fee or 40% increase. That would not go over well. So I can, I can understand the justification of the 3 to 325, and I appreciate that the policy subcommittee took into account of not, you know, on the family fee, only increasing that for the first child and maintaining the increase the same for the second child or more children. So, and I would think that maybe more families have multiple children if, I don't know what the split is, but, so, that I do appreciate that they considered that.
Well, I sat in the audience, as Ray mentioned, he did the year before I did, when the agonization, when we agonized, when group agonized from 175 to 300. I remember that very clearly. My sense is that the small annual or retrospective increments make sense. The $25 increase is 8.33%, and if you annualize it over three years, it's 2.77. I think the small increments are better than a wallop. And I don't really need an Excel spreadsheet to convince me that costs are going up. I, I think we all realize that.
No, I don't disagree with you at all. I just, for me, you know, we talk about costs, and, you know, some of the things that have been mentioned are things that are carried in another line item in the budget. So to the extent the costs are going up, it is helpful for me to make a decision that's based on something concrete. That's all I'm saying.
Except that, you know, none of the items that are covered by the athletic fee go directly to a line item.
I understand.
It's an offset.
Offset.
I understand.
Right. So, so clearly, the offset from the revolving fund goes against, you know, the, a number of, you could say goes against a number of line items.
Sure.
Right.
Anything else, anybody? A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No.
Paul abstained.
Paul abstains.
So could you repeat the vote? What was it?
Everybody voted yes, except for me, and Paul abstained.
So 5, 1, and 1.
And I will take this, though, note, is that we move in so many different directions. And obviously, Margaret Conde has been with us at many, many meetings. This one, you know, we'll make sure that we always reach out again to her and stuff like that. So it's not, it was never, just so there was clarity, there was no slight or any intentional slight.
Oh, of course. And I didn't, I didn't mean to suggest that there was. I think if, if, if an issue like this is going to be taken up, you know, it needs to be taken up with all of the appropriate parties involved.
As Dennis said, you know, we talked about it in November and February, so you lose track that you think, okay, maybe it's been communicated before, but, you know.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Okay, 7.3 is a financial update from the third quarter. John?
Okay.
Thank you.
So Paul and Andy, you weren't here last time. We didn't get into numbers last time, because the, John hadn't finished the computations, but we did just discuss in general terms that we expected to have, I guess you would call it a surplus, or unexpended funds from the fiscal '13 budget that was appropriated, based on a number of factors, one of which was lower special education costs. If you remember when we went through the budget initially last year, we were faced with some move-ins. And then during the course of the year, the numbers changed, and kids moved out, and the added district tuitions in particular changed dramatically. And then the other thing was, I think we experienced a number of, higher number of retirements, particularly those event, those that were anticipated than we, than we expected. So we're looking at, I think, a fairly significant positive variance, which is a good thing. And we talked about last time, some opportunities to, to look at some, some things where in the past, we've, you know, spent some, some year-end dollars on ordering additional supplies, paper in bulk to get a better rate, doing some additional maintenance and other small projects, things of that nature. And that's something we talked about doing as well. And, and obviously, with, with the kind of positive variance we're talking about here, there's a tremendous opportunity to return a lot of money to the town, which is, which is great, because if you recall, when we went through this budget a year ago, or more than a year ago, it was in January, I remember, we got word of that $533,000 added district tuition hit. And the advisory committee and the selectmen were, worked with us to find those dollars in the budget, you know, very late in, in the game. We were very appreciative, and it worked out well. And now that it's, you know, it looks like we're coming up with a positive variance. We're not going to have the final numbers for a few weeks, but I think it's a great opportunity for, for us to do what we said. And that's, we have money left over, it's going to, it's going to go back. So, Doc, did you want to?
No, I think that you made that point. We had a big hit in the budget of January of 12, and we got good support in terms of both understanding and real dollars. And that particular count is now in very, very good shape. And, and those dollars that we thought were going to be needed were not needed, and so they should go back to where they came from. And that's the, the projection there of what we think will be unexpended. In total, it's 560, and you can see that the special ed, and that does include the vocational ed, is in the black by a significant amount.
Are there any specific items you want to speak to here, John?
No, I guess I just would say, you know, that the, you know, we're talking about a, about a positive variance of $560,000. And then also, there's an additional $41,000 in the capital. I called your attention to it last week, too, but that has to do with a couple of the capital items that were approved, the largest of which has to do with the Foster School Window Project. You know, we had $37,000 allocated for that, but just not prudent to do that at this time. We're better off to handle that door and that window along with a more widespread or complete window and door project through the MSBA for that project. So that would actually add another $41,000. Other than that, generally, I mean, the year has been, we had a good hiring season, so, so we're looking at a positive variance when it comes to personnel. Utilities and gasoline, those costs are up a little bit, basically for usage, because it was a colder winter. And then also, we had some offsets from the revolving accounts that we're not planning to use. The, the bulk of it The bulk of it, as we can see, is special education of $553,000 approximately, I mean, tuitions are about 453 below from what I can gather right now, and then transportation, also another 93. Now, the tuitions, we had some anticipated placements that didn't, weren't required because there were other moving pieces, and we had another student that during the budget process was not sure of a graduation, it turned around and graduated, and we actually had a couple of withdrawals, and as we know, the numbers are very big in special education, so when those types of events occur, these variances can add up very quickly. Now, probably continue that with the special ed transportation costs, I mean, there's going to be a certain amount of cost that, in transportation for outside contractors that will be a result of those people pulling out of those programs, or that graduation taking place. Then also, we did, we were part of the North River Collaborative for Transportation, so we actually put some of our routes to them, and that's helped keep the cost of outside contractors down, and then using our own managed resources, we've helped there. VOTEC, there has, is a little bit of money allocated in VOTEC for transportation as well, that combined with some special education going the other side, really nets out to about a $7,000 positive for VOTEC. The other projects that I spoke about the other week, those are, in contracts and transportation, I mean, this year, I entered into another lease agreement to lease a few copiers to save on the maintenance side, so that would have increased the contractor, you know, contracts and transportation piece, because we actually leased those copies, opposed to purchasing them, and then, you know, I've actually gone out to for pricing on the Plymouth River Shed and stuff, so, those types of projects, and also removing the propane tank and PRS, those are all sort of encumbered in this number, so, and really, that takes the places, there's maintenance money that we defer through the entire year, right? And when I say we defer it, it's like, we do absolutely, we make repairs, and we keep the building safe and clean and warm, okay, but there's sometimes, there's projects that you're just not going to get to while the kids are there. And then also, you don't want to, you don't want to spend all your money in advance as the year goes on, because you want to make sure if you get in trouble, you know, energy goes up too high, or you get in trouble somewhere else, that you can sort of cut back on those maintenance expenditures and use those funds. The plant is in, you know, our plant is in good shape, but we certainly do have needs out there, so really, those operating dollars, and also paper purchase, I mean, I had $70,000 in this budget to purchase paper, that's our annual expenditure, we go through that. However, we had an inventory from the prior year, so there's actually $50,000 less paper expenditures here, which I think are very prudently used towards the plant, you know, in terms of maintenance.
Right.
So, generally, that's, that's how we got to where we're at now, I think it's good news, I think, you know, that we're in good shape.
Could I just make one more comment on the special ed? When you look at a number like $550,000 below what we anticipated, you could think, my gosh, what bad budget is you are, what bad estimate is, but remember, the 533 that we were looking for in additional money represented three children, I think this probably isn't just three children, but it doesn't take a lot of, a larger number of youngsters, because some of those placements are hundred thousand or more, so.
Very expensive, yeah. No, that's a, that's a great point.
And remember, we're budgeting now in October through December, January, on kids that we think are going to be here for the entire year, and there's actually been, you know, or develop placements that will develop and stuff, you have to maybe provide some contingency for that, and, you know, when things don't, sometimes things work out good, and sometimes they don't.
Right, well, thank you. Did Paul leave?
He had to go.
Did you pick up his daughter? Oh, missed it. So, I was just going to frame, frame an issue for Paul and Andy, who weren't here last time, we had discussed, and they're embedded in the contracts and transportation line item, the number of projects that John had talked about doing, that we had initially sought capital funds for and didn't get approved, and talked about, you know, taking the opportunity to get some of those things done, to the extent that we had dollars available at the end of the budget, not inconsistent with what we've done in the past with respect to a lot of maintenance, additional ordering of supplies at a favorable cost, and things of that nature. You know, obviously, because there's a capital outlay committee in town, there are some folks who are concerned about process. I've had discussions with both the chair and the vice chair of advisory about this issue. If you recall, everyone except for Andy, who was here last time, Mary Power got up and spoke to this particular issue, raising concern about using operating dollars for capital expenditures, particularly if they weren't approved by the capital outlay committee. One of the things that we've talked about, and I would just remind you that the school committee, in its ability to oversee its budget, is, and the school department is different than the rest of the departments, the other departments don't have the ability to cross over operating and capital lines with respect to expenditures, we do. We also are the only group in town that is statutorily responsible for its own budget. That's not to suggest that we should be spending money haphazardly, and in fact, I think we have a responsibility, that we do have unexpended dollars, to do our best to return them to the town, and I think that's exactly what we're doing. I think what this situation presents is essentially a win-win for the entire town, in that we can return unexpected, unexpended funds to the bottom line.
And unexpected.
And unexpected, right? And at the same time, we can get a few year-end, small projects done, and remove them from the capital pipeline, and take them off of that five-year capital plan. I have a call into Ray Eisenbees, just to, you know, brief him on this, and keep him in the loop about what it is that, that we're intending to do. You know, I've had, as I said, I had discussions with the, with the chair and the vice chair of advisory about this, you know, I do understand that there are some folks who have concerns about this practice as setting a precedent for other departments, but I would point out again, that other departments don't have the ability to do what we do, and in fact, I think when you look at a return of, you know, over half a million dollars directly in response to, you know, the, what happened a year ago, and when we needed those funds, the town side was there for us, and now, when circumstances have changed, you know, obviously, we're not going shopping with that money, we're returning it to the bottom line, which I think will put us in a great position forecast-wise, and able to get a great start on funding that fund balance line item that folks certainly are concerned about, and for good reason. So, I think this, you know, presents a really good opportunity for us, and as I said, I think is a win-win situation for everybody in town.
Are you looking for a vote from us, or are you just updating us?
I think this is just an update.
Great.
Deuce.
Thank you.
And two clarifications, in terms of the capital budget variance, since capital budget's spilt out in the warrant, that, that number, we can't just spend for other things, that has to be specific, because Ray Eisenby told me, or I thought he told me, that when you have something in the specifically allocated in capital budget in the warrant, that can only be used for that amount.
I mean, that would be, I think that money should be returned.
Okay, yeah, no, I think that's, I think that's right, I think the capital, I think the capital, the capital positive variance would go back.
Okay, because, because we got a gross number here, so I just wanted to...
Sure.
And then the second thing is, when we were talking, as we were narrowing our list that time, you, myself, and Paul, other things that, because capital has that $10,000 threshold...
Correct.
There was a couple of things that were right on the cuffs there, that we talked about, like at the high school, the high school auditorium stage, the carpeting there, the carpeting either, in one of the libraries, either in south or east.
South, I think.
So, one of them, but I, those were other things, I will get my notes of, because we made detail, you know, I'll get my notes, because I know we went over them, but those also popped out in my mind, and I, you know, if it's, if everyone, Ray Eisenby and the chair of AdCom agree, I'd love to get some of those little, little things off.
Well, I don't, I don't want to misrepresent that folks have said we could do X and Y, but in fact, we don't need permission to do X and Y.
Well, if it's a spirit where they agree, then...
Right, I mean, in fact, I have conversations with, with, with certain folks in advisory, and I said, Ray Eisenbees and I haven't connected yet, I haven't reached out to him, but I was really, merely to keep him in the loop, and not to ask. You know, as I said, I think, I think we would be returning that $41,000 positive variance for capital, you know, and I would hope that, you know, rather than just going to the bottom line and not being used for anything next year, that that additional money might be made available to capital next year, because I think that would be a good practice, to the extent that there's capital, unexpended capital from one year to the next, that that money would be made available to capital, since we seem to struggle year after year to fund $2 million of capital, when we have, you know, more than twice that in requests.
Not only do we have more than twice that in requests, but if you look at the five-year capital plan that was in the warrant, there's well over $3 million in next year...
Sure.
Already, without anything added to it, so the chances are that we're going to be, we're going to be looking, you know, at reducing things that are already in the capital pipeline for next year, unless there's some other way to finance those, so. I think these items, which are already were in requests, and were expected to be done, you know, I think, and they're all small items, many of which have a really excellent return on investment, others of which are safety issues, you know, I think it makes sense to do this.
John?
And Ray, if I could just add one more point, just, you know, back in February, when we had a positive variance, we talked about these items, and the reason for that, and I just make the, want to make the point, Andy, because there's, there's only so many resources and so much time our maintenance people, or Paul Field, or anybody in my organization can actually do, because some of these things, it takes a lot of lead time to turn around and get bid prices, know what's happening, get a contract set, you know, get, do the appropriate procurement process in Massachusetts, so that's why back in February, when we had this, we sort of started talking about this process, so, you know, with that direction, I just sort of started moving forward to kind of get these things done. I mean, if I wanted to do the gym floors now, I wouldn't have time to do that, I wouldn't have time to do the carpet in the library, but I think we had a plan for next year on the capital to combine those two items, so that they are over $10,000, and we deferred them.
The high school floor got done last year.
Well, that was gym floor, we're talking about the auditoriums.
Oh, the auditorium floor, yeah.
You know, the auditorium will need a facelift at some point. And, and the other thing, too, that I might add, is just that, you know, over the, since, since my tenure here, I've been making a concerted effort to include more and more items on that capital list, because these are more items that we need to keep our eye on as we go forward in the future. Now, you know, to the extent that there's, there's better operate, more project money in the operating budget, we would be doing those projects, even though they exceed $10,000 through the operating budget as we proceeded, okay, but we, that's not, that's not what we've done, so, you know, that's, that's another important part, we have a lot more that will be on capital, because I'm trying to find all the projects that are out there, and I continually add to that list, so that will continue that balance of capital needs to, you know, will continue to increase. You know, we started at $1.2 million, and ended at 550 for 14, so.
John, under contracts in transportation, with an overdraft or a negative of 23,406, as I read these items, there's a lot of things there, is that overdraft of 23,406 from zero, or is an overdraft from, from funds?
From the funds available in those accounts, so, so, you know, we have budgeted amounts...
But that's inclusive of these items.
It's inclusive of those items, yes, yes. You know, so, but that, that, so, you know, my, I mean, the contractor numbers, all my contractors for HVAC repair, electrical repair, boiler repair, boiler cleanings, you know, general maintenance items, a lot of those items are in there, so we have a balance there, to the extent that we don't use those as we go forward during the year, you know, our repairs are less, or our maintenance people know, okay, hey, we can, we can, we can fix this, you know, less costly than going out and replacing something, we save that operating money as we go along, and then, you know, so, this would be a typical thing, just, it, it looks like a capital item, but it would just be a normal year-end project, hey, let's, let's take care of this refrigeration now, so it doesn't break later, and then we're stuck with a more costly procurement.
So, a punch list, if you will, of what's itemized here, is covered to the extent of minus 23,406?
Correct.
Got it?
Yeah, which really is offset through the paper, you know, I save $49,000 in paper, so, you know, it's sort of washing.
Right.
You know, we've done very good on supplies, too, I mean, aside from paper, our supplies, because we changed the ordering a couple, we ordered a process a couple of years back, we're saving almost 30% in supplies, you know, so, as we go forward, we refine our budgeting more and more to get closer and closer, but still make sure that we're protecting school needs, and doing the things that our students need.
Anything else from the committee? Laura.
Just addressing the capital stuff first. Okay, I'm fine. Hi, folks, I'm Tom Piles, 727 Main Street, from the advisory committee. Two things, first of all, I think the processing that we have developed from a capital outlay standpoint, works to the benefit of not only all the other departments, but the school department as well, and I would, I would hope that you would take into consideration that all capital items should be vetted through the capital outlay committee at some point. Second point, if you, on the $41,000 for the window replacement, if you are going to eventually use money for that purpose, I think there's a way to encumber that money and not give it back, not have it part of that, it's actually deferring the project until you actually do it, and so you can set aside those funds, so, it would be my advice, if you are considering to, to do that project eventually...
I think it has to be done in the context of an entire window project, Tom, because there would just maybe be more involved.
It probably could, but it's still, I think you could still encumber those $41,000 and keep that in store for the project when it eventually gets done. Just, let's, let's look into that, because that...
I think it's a good point, we know that we can carry over capital money in a way that we can't carry over operating, I don't know that there's a limit on it in terms of years, but it is a good thing to look at.
I think you can do it for some period of time, so you should look into that, okay?
Thanks.
Hi, Laura Marwell, advisory, and to clarify for me a little bit, so the $41,000, is it was allocated in your capital budget, and you're not going to spend it this year?
That's correct.
And so, the option is to either encumber it and not use it, or you'd like to use it for something else?
No.
No. I think that, I mean, the option, I guess, would be to encumber it, to hold it out there, and the, and the only reason I'm not suggesting holding it out there, is because I think this would be in a context of a project that's more like 800 or a million doll, 800,000 or a million dollars, so, so it doesn't, you know, the $41,000 won't make a dent when we go to the MSBA and try to get a reimbursement process involved with that, you know?
Okay.
But, so, so I don't know why we'd, and until the committee makes a decision to go that direction, we don't know.
Okay, and if you were to consider encumbering it, would you still consider doing other capital projects with it this year?
I don't think we're talking about that capital money at all.
Okay, so you're talking about, you're talking about using some fiscal year 13 surplus for unexpended funds for capital projects that have been in the pipeline, but that were not approved this year? I think that's what I understood, I just wanted to make sure that I had it, I had it clear. Okay, and I, I think that you articulated very well some of the concerns that we have, that the practice in the town is that at the end of the year, unexpended funds drop back to fund balance, which, which is very necessary for maintaining the, the town savings, so to speak, which gives us the flexibility that we need if emergencies should arise, and also helps us maintain our AAA rating, which allows us to borrow effectively. And I, I think that one of the things we're concerned about is the precedent that, you know, what one department or committee can do, it would be very difficult then not to be able to allow other committees to do that.
Well, Laura, if I could interrupt, I think it would be very easy not to allow other departments to do that, because other departments wouldn't suggest that they could do that, whereas the school department is different, and needs to be looked at differently, because it does have autonomous control over its own budget.
Yeah, no, and I don't dispute that you, you have the authority to do that, but we don't want to create ill will among departments, where one department feels that its needs aren't being met the same way and other departments are, and I think that would be an unfortunate result that could happen from a precedent like that, so I would urge you to consider that as you go through this process, and I am really happy to hear that you are keeping capital in the loop, because I do think in terms of priorities, it's important that any monies that are expended be a high priority, and that they could take a look at that, so.
Maybe you could help us explain to the other departments why there's a difference.
Yeah, maybe, and I would say, I had a very informative conversation with Dr. Gallo today, and I think there are some things that we... today, and I think there are some things that we could work out in terms of, you know, I, I learned from her that some changes that were made in the capital funding process a number of years ago that were intended to be an improvement in the process, from her perspective are not, and so I think there might be some conversations going forward to understand that and, and try to respond to it.
Yeah, it's not too long ago, I think, that the process was changed, and it just hasn't gone, I think, the way it was anticipated it would go.
Well, I think it depends on your perspective, like so many things. But again, I would urge you to consider the precedent, and that, that is our concern. And if, if this is something that we could deal with in a forward-looking way, maybe that would be a, a good outcome.
Laura, can I just ask you, you say "our concern," are you speaking for the advisory committee right now, or just yourself?
I am speaking for, I guess I have to say I'm speaking for myself, for the, for myself, but I have spoken, I've been privy to those conversations with Ray and Dr. Gallo, and, and I did talk with Greg before this, so that we would sort of have an advisory committee perspective.
So just to recap, based on this sheet, and granted, things can change, about 550 and 560,000 dollars is being returned, plus we're going to get some of these things done?
Yes.
That's the plan.
Okay, just making sure.
It's a win-win.
Well, I was part of that group, several of us that were out at Foster, and were told that the, part of that, aspects are part of that play shed are frankly dangerous.
That's right.
And I remember a conversation here within the past two or three meetings where there was a concern about people tripping over the concrete slabs at the entrance to the school.
That's right.
So, wow.
Yeah, and that's, and you mentioned the Foster, I was there as well, it was a Saturday after Thanksgiving, and the Foster, I believe Capital Outlay split that into two phases, so half of that was deferred. The evaluation, I think, was, was covered, or no? Or was it all deferred?
We deferred the entire thing.
We deferred the entire thing, but at the time, as John mentioned, we had that discussion about if there was an opportunity with excess funds left at the end of the year, that that's something that we would want to look out doing, particularly because it is a safety concern. And Laura, your kids go to Foster.
It's true.
Right. I would think that would be a particular concern of yours.
And I would, and you know, in, in other departments where we have these options, there's a reserve on transfer, so you can get people over, and certainly you take the issue to the safety or concern, and something that would sort of check boxes, that would be not meant to be considered. I think Dr. Gallo took pride that you've never had to go through that process before.
Well, I wouldn't hesitate.
I think that's the point.
With a big enough need, but we do work hard to, to work within the system.
And I think, based on what I've heard, you know, Tom's comments and Laura's, and certainly I think some of the other discussion that's happened here, certainly it's something to, to look into, there probably will, I'm sure there will be a continuing discussion on how things are done in the future, but I think ultimately the towns, the towns' needs are being served well by, by going ahead with these things.
Yeah, great.
And you know, each of the times that we've gone before the town to get funding for big projects such as for East School and such as for the Mills School, we've had a lot of criticism, and it's all been directed at us, not about the budget process, and not at the capital outlay committee or the advisory committee. None of us really should be blamed for those things, but a lot of criticism for failure to maintain our, our facilities. And, you know, it might have been tempting to say, well, you know what, our capital needs have never been met. We don't, we don't say that, because we are a team, we try in town, and we try to work together, but certainly the town expects that we maintain facilities, it's just that the funding hasn't been able to keep up with that. It's not anybody's fault, but as we look forward, maybe we can find better ways to manage that process.
Great.
Moving on to 7.4, Fields Project Fundraising and Planning Budgets. John has hot off the presses updated numbers for everybody.
What's the increase?
Thank you.
It's John.
Thank you, sir.
So just going back to June 3rd, the last time we met, the numbers reflected, we were looking at a shortfall of about 131,550. That reflected private donations of 1,083,000. Since then, we deducted a number we had been carrying for a particular potential donor. There are discussions ongoing with that potential donor at the time, and we're, we were carrying a range of potential donation, but we decided since nothing had been determined within a two-week time period, that it made sense to take it out as money that we could count on. We hope to be able to work something out with that, with that donor, and that we can add to that bottom line, but as of now. So if you look at the, at the updated sheet, it does show an increased, well, it shows, it shows a, rather, it shows a decrease in private fundraising, but it's actually a net increase, but the amount we were carrying for that potential donor has been removed. So, in fact, today, we received a, a check that will be deposited tomorrow.
Yep.
That's reflected in the, in the, the numbers that had been pledged but not yet collected, so we've now increased the collected amount to over $650,000. So we're.
Plugging away.
Plugging away and, and reducing the gap on uncollected pledges, and, and I can't say enough about folks who have been so generous repeatedly, some of them, and continue to be. So it's very encouraging, and we're getting very close, and, you know, hopefully the results of our redesign of the concession building, which we'll get to shortly, will yield a little more savings than we even anticipated. So we'll see.
So just one quick thing for John. So on, on here, where it has on concession in line three there, you still had low bidder in there, that's from before, right? So this, this is, this really price, say, target cost or something like that?
Yeah.
No, that's a good point.
Right, that's, that's fair, right. That's the number we, when we rejected the bids, 674 and change, we decided to just carry the number that we had been carrying in the budget, but that's, that's a, a good point about the characterization.
Target budget.
So the, the good news is we signed the contract with RAD. We were able to, we have enough money on hand to cover that contract, and then some. We're still short a little bit to finalize matters with the concession, but redesign of that is ongoing, so we'll, we'll get there very soon. Just a, a project update, I did speak with Rob Delmonico today. They have begun to mobilize at the site to deliver equipment, silt fencing and erosion controls, and they will start installing those on Wednesday morning.
Cool. Great.
I know the rain may be Thursday.
Well, we'll see, yeah. I thought the rain was going to end by Wednesday.
Whoa.
No, it's a lot of rain today. So I think it's good, it's good news all around. I would, I would, since we last met, we did get some bad news, the USA Football Grant that we applied for, the amount of $50,000 we did not get. So we had to take that off as a potential source of funding.
But if Bob Kraft could get his Super Bowl ring back and donate it to us, that could be the 50,000 dollars right there.
Well, and Bill Belichick, if you're out there listening, Hingham resident.
Right.
No, I can't, again, I can't say enough about the, the folks in town who have been so generous. So we're getting very close, and contact with donors is ongoing, collection of pledges is ongoing, and.
That's good.
Yeah. Any questions on that? Carol?
So it's just 126 is the, is the gap now?
That's correct.
Down to like 434.
That's correct.
Thanks.
That's, that's assuming the, 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 the bid that we accepted for the fields, and it's assuming a number for the concession building that we carried as an estimate.
At $550.
Yeah, not based on a real bid, but just an estimate that we had carried throughout the process.
Okay, thanks.
So. Any questions, comments?
Summer school.
Okay, good news.
Calendar, get the calendars out.
Yes, so, summer meetings. Oh, you know what, I'm sorry, before we move on.
Concession building, right?
Not that we, yeah, we're going to concession first, and actually, we'll cover this in the concession, that's right, we'll cover this in the concession update, so.
Getting ahead of myself.
7:5 is the updated concession building, so on June 6th, and then this evening, earlier this evening, a small group of us met with Gail and, Gail's engineers to look at potential redesign. Once we rejected the bids, we said, okay, how do we make this different so that we can reduce the cost and go out to bid again? And essentially what I, what I told Gail was, we're now carrying a number of 550,000, which was the estimate that, that you had told us to carry, so you need to design us a building that suits our needs, that costs less than that. And that was, that's what we asked them to do. And so we met on the 6th, and we talked about how we could reconfigure the building perhaps, alter what the building is made of. We made a very painful decision that perhaps we can revisit if the opportunity allows to make it a seasonal building, to take out the winterization, which means taking out the insulation, which means changing the exterior materials for more aesthetically pleasing to more of a ground face block, but still will look nice. We decided to shorten the length of the building by seven feet, and just by doing that, saved approximately $65,000 to $70,000, or perhaps more, in sheer cost associated with that. Decided to reconfigure the mechanical room within the building footprint so that we could still kind of maintain the integrity of the things that were important, like the separate entrance bathrooms, the, the size of the concession space. It was important to retain the second floor storage area, that's something we did consider cutting, but it was kind of a last resort, because, you know, it was clear that the storage was important, and there isn't going to be a tremendous amount of storage on the, on the first floor. And then we made a number of things alternates that we would get pricing on and determine if they're going to be included or not. You know, things like the finishes within the concession room, the covered pavilion area, those things we'll look at as, as alternates, depending on what the pricing comes in at. So overall, I wish I had a large one to show you. The footprint hasn't changed that much, as I said, it shrunk by about seven feet in length. Discussion tonight in the meeting, the designer is actually going to tweak a little bit of what we talked about so far, reconfiguring where the staircase is, kind of shift, shift the, the large overhead door down a little bit, and look to decrease the width, I guess, of the electric room, if, if feasible. Overall, I think it has, at least as the structural engineer told us, has the potential to save us, you know, 150,000 or more from the bid price that we were at. And if that's the case, then we'll be below the budget number we're carrying now, which would be great news. So we'll see that.
We'll see.
Over the next, yeah, over the next couple of days, we'll get revised plan in the email, which, which shows the tweaks that we told them to make today with respect to the staircase and the mechanical room, and then we'll also get a cost estimate, so we can see, you know, what it's going to cost, and then we'll make arrangements to go back to planning. Initially, we thought we were just going to have to go to the staff at the planning board, but it appears now, because we are changing the footprint a little bit, we'll go back for a hearing, but it should just be, I think, fairly straightforward.
Making the footprint actually smaller.
Process, we're making the footprint smaller, that's right. I, I wouldn't imagine there would be objection to that, I, I don't know, hopefully not, but certainly we'll go through that process and then, and go to bid. You know, from a timetable standpoint, we look to be about, we look to be about two months behind on the building versus the timetable for the rest of the project. So key in this redesign is finding a way to install the electrical cabinet in a way that allows us to use the multipurpose field in October, assuming it's done on time, because this is the building that's going to house that, that utility infrastructure. We've asked them to try to find a way to, to actually end the building and build around it, and they're looking into the feasibility of that, they think they can. So that's pretty much where we are on that. I still think it'll be a great building, I think it'll, you know, serve all our needs with respect to utility, storage, you know, providing bathrooms, and a consistent concession space to what we have now. And it should look pretty nice. So, any questions or comments on that?
Just two comments, because I sat in on the meeting as an observer earlier today, and two thoughts. One, when I know when you had the discussion about the, the winterization of the building or making it, you know, beyond seasonal. One of the things that seems to me that was brought up when we had the meeting a week or two ago, was that because that would require a second set of plans, that the additional complexity might discourage some bidders from bidding on that building, because they'd have to go through the whole process of really calculating it twice. So, you know, my, my personal opinion is that since we're still a little short, and hopefully the people of Hingham will continue to open their wallets, and that would be wonderful, I would love to see this cost estimate come down below $500,000. And so, you know, again, while it'd be nice to be able to winterize it, and I know, as Andy pointed out, there are some advantages cost-wise, long-term.
Yep.
And just having to pay, say, $100 a month to heat it as opposed to winterizing the toilets and all that kind of thing. I think in the short term, if the money's not there, that would be, that's a worthwhile trade-off. So I would be concerned to add that back in even as an alternate, at the risk of maybe, you know, scaring away a real, somebody who's going to have a real sharp pencil out there. And the other thought I had, and I don't know if it's a good idea, but I'll just mention it, is since we clearly can use the field once it's ready, and the issue is really without toilets, using the bleachers, and without lights, obviously, using the field at night, one thought is, and again, I don't know if it's a good thought, would be if you ran all the cables and whatever lighting, I mean, the electrical over to where the building is, but did not actually put in that exterior service, that's, their estimating is like $25,000 or $30,000, hopefully it'd be less than that. Once you were able to get that building enclosed, which hopefully could be sometime in October or so, then you could put in the service, and maybe, yeah, we might lose a night game or two, but might be able to save us some money from that way. So I just mentioned that, I don't know if it's a good idea, I really, you know, didn't have the chance to discuss it with, with Bill at length, but he did mention, I mentioned as he was leaving, that they could run, you know, all the wires obviously across, but just not hook it up until we had the building, you know, enough to do that. But again, obviously, then we would not have any lights up, we wouldn't know to use it that way.
What we've talked to him about is, is running it and installing the cabinet, you know, where, where that service would go.
Right.
And all we'd need to be done is the slab. It's just, it's all a matter of timing on when that's done, it doesn't even necessarily have to be enclosed.
Well, but I think if it's not enclosed, then you have to have a exterior.
Sure.
You know, a case for it or a cabinet.
Sure.
As opposed to an interior. So again, just a thought, not, again, not a preferred.
I think it's all about timing.
Right, not a preferred way to go, but if we had to.
Right, it's all about timing, and I think, I think what I mentioned to Bill too, is that I, we need to see the numbers, obviously, before we make any decisions about taking something out, adding something in, you know, could see the numbers, confirm what it would cost based on. cost, based on the cost estimate for this redesign for winterization, and then we could have a conversation about it, weighing all the factors with maintenance, with, you know, annual, you know, winterization costs that, you know, we know there's a cost there. So, you know, I think until we see real numbers, we can't decide one way or the other. We do have, under this, with respect to Gail's services for the redesign, we've received what's essentially a change order to their services for Phase Two, which is included under the $275,000 that was appropriated at special town meeting. This is redesigned, fixed fee not to exceed $13,050. So, fee breakdown, start meeting a program development, which we've already had, schematic design, which they've gone through, and they're revising this week, detailed redesign development, prep of bid docs will be the next phase, cost estimating, estimating structural redesign, permitting, bid award. So, I had a discussion with John about this earlier today, we are getting very tight on what's left of that $275, but this is, would be covered.
Ray, if I could just interject a little bit, so, I, just to read out on this project, so, we have $245,473 spent as of right now. You know, we have the project management piece for Gail of $16,590, and then this job of $13,050. And then, we, I know that last week, John Chestia was doing some work, so I'm anticipating that I probably will end up getting some bill. So, you know, as of right now, I'm showing a balance of $277,000 approximately, which is a couple thousand dollars over what we had. So, I would propose that we use the field revolving to finalize this, and then, you know, that article will really come to a close, we spend up the $275, and then, you know, John Chestia's bill would probably handle with the field revolving.
Yeah, interestingly, with John Chestia, he's the town's peer review consultant on engineering. Obviously, he was involved during the permitting process to do the town's peer review. I didn't realize that he was going to be involved in the review of the conformed plans, and consultation with the conservation agent with regard to the SWIP plan, but maybe I misunderstood. So, I think you're right, I think we probably would get a bill, because he was involved last week in reviewing plans and giving the go-ahead.
So, we're pretty much spent?
To start, yeah.
The $275 spent.
Right. We need to approve this change order?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so, if I could get a motion to approve the proposal by Gail Associates for redesign of the concession slash utility slash amenities building for a fixed fee not to exceed $13,050.
I tell move?
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a way, so, John, you received this on the 12th?
I received this, I think it was, yeah, there was Lester's, they made it.
It's fine, I just wish, it's a lot to read, just wish I had got it in the package.
I haven't seen it yet either, it's the first I've seen it.
Yeah, the package were out when I came in, actually.
I mean, it sounds fine, I'm ready to vote, I'm just noting that.
John, I'm sure you've reviewed it?
Looked at it, yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I would point out, with respect to the contracts, John has, we have been consulting with Bob Garrity to help us with finalizing the contracts. John and I have also been consulting with Roger Fernandez, keeping him in the loop every step of the way, which is, which is very valuable, obviously, from, for a number of reasons, so, it's truly a group effort on this project. So, that's one vote on that. The other vote, I think we need to take, is something I mentioned maybe a month ago or so. It's a vote similar to the one we took about a year ago, when Carol, myself, and Andy were dealing with the track. And it's essentially to approve, not only John's ability to authorize a certain low level of change orders, but Andy, Ed, and myself, who are overseeing the concession redesign, and actually, the Fields project in its entirety, the ability to approve change orders as necessary. So, the way this read last year was to authorize John Ferris, Director of Business and Support Services, to approve up to an additional $10,000 on any single item, and authorize the school committee chair, vice chair, and chair, that would be myself, Andy, and Ed, to approve up to a total of $50,000 for change orders for the track project, in this case, it would be the Fields project, in the absence of a timely school committee meeting to vote on such requests, particularly since the next item is meeting dates, we're only going to meet, I think, once in July and once in August, and the bulk of this construction will be going on then. So, I think there is a need to be a little bit, to have the ability to be nimble if necessary. So, I would recommend that we adopt a similar vote. How do the numbers, you think the numbers are appropriate? When we're, when we're talking about the track, that was a much smaller project.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm comfortable with my.
$100,000 ended up being four or something.
Right. I think, you know, I think I'm comfortable with the $10,000 for me, but I think that the steering committee should go higher than the $50,000, you know?
$50,000 for a single CO? Or accurate?
What?
Well, I think with the.
What we did was, we gave John ability $10,000 on a single item, so he would deal with that. And then, if it was a total of $50,000 or more, oh, I'm sorry, up to a total of $50,000, then it would go to the group. You know, if you're, if you're still fine with the $10,000, if it's more than that, we could just put a cap on what the group would deal with. I mean, we could probably go.
And the only other thing I would add is, was not to exceed the contingency allowed, or some words to that effect?
Right.
Yes, so if it was something that came up that was.
Not to exceed available contingency included in the budget.
Right.
I don't know, I think I'd want, I'd want to chime in if we were looking at that much.
Yeah.
Two, what's the contingency, two sixty?
Well, so maybe we want to put a cap?
No, 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 not to exceed, we'll pick a number here, like, this was 50, like, say we pick 100.
I would say 100.
Not, yeah, up to that, provided it's from available contingency.
Right.
Not from, not to go over budget, right?
Because in theory, if we meet in July, we could approve a CO, it might be 100,000.
No, I understand. I would want to be voting on something that was going up to the contingency.
Oh, yeah, oh, sure. Oh, I think we would all want to be in that discussion, and, yeah, absolutely. No, I think it's just a matter of being included.
So, let's say 100?
Okay.
I'm going to make the motion, and then.
So, let's see. What do we call ourselves?
Steering committee.
Oversight.
Oversight, Fields Oversight.
Monitoring and oversight group.
Okay, I will make the motion to authorize John Ferris, Director of Business and Support Services, to approve up to an additional $10,000 on any single item related to the Fields project, and authorize the School Committee Fields Oversight Subcommittee to coordinate oversight of the construction, and to approve up to a total of $100,000 for change orders for the Fields project, in the absence of a timely school committee meeting to vote on such requests.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
The only thing is, I would like to add.
About, from available contingency.
From available contingency, budget contingency.
One thing, but Carol would be, instead of single item, could we say, single change order?
Right.
Single change order?
Yeah.
The amount of the same.
Maybe multiple items.
Right. Single item, okay, single change order, that's for John. And then, $100,000 from available, what did I write here, for available, from available contingency funds for change orders for the Fields project, in the absence of a timely school committee meeting to vote on such requests.
Through the motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Good. Yeah, I'll write it down.
Yes, please.
I'll give it to you after, I'll fix it. Okay. So, we've taken care of that, we've taken care of that. So, I think we're done with that for now, right? Okay. School committee meeting dates, July and August, we talked about.
Too bad Paul's gone.
We talked about, we talked about.
We had originally recommended two dates, and it seemed that the July 22nd date was fine for the people here, but two people weren't here, so we need to check on that one. And then, we were having difficulty with finding an August date.
Was either the 12th or the 19th, right?
Those were, yeah.
Do we always have to do a Monday? Even in summer?
Well, I think, we don't have to do a Monday, but the issue was that people were going to be away the entire week, simply changing the day of the week didn't seem to help on that. So, we do need an August date.
Andy, are you good for the 22nd of July? Start with that.
As of right now, I am.
And then, the second thing we talked about was planning, perhaps, the thinking that a Saturday morning in the summer would, might be easier schedule than a Saturday morning in the fall for a planning meeting. And then, the third thing, you got a little piece of paper on your pile tonight, because I heard late today from Glenn Kuchar, and this is about doing a training session for the school committee, as he's done the last two years, which we much appreciate, his willingness to come to one of 351 cities and towns to do that for us, and he's offered up some dates. In the past, what, the past couple of years, I think what we've done is to have a, like, a five to eight, or five to nine meeting on an evening, and bring in pizza, and you can all enjoy discussion together, and that that would give us credit for, for the training component that's required for new folks, but also just a general opportunity to get together from someone who can answer other concerns or questions and respond. I think everyone has found that helpful, and he's always been very generous with his time. So, so that's also on the table, as to whether or not we want to go forward with that. If so, we certainly would want to give him as much advance notice as we can.
Well, let's see if we can do the meeting dates first.
Okay.
So, I think, Liza, your problem was August 12th, right? So, the July date?
That's fine.
Was okay with everybody, I think?
Yep.
So, let's say July 22nd, and August?
I can't do the 19th.
You can't do the 19th, you can't do the 12th. You away that whole week?
No, I'll be back probably on Wednesday.
And I'm going that Monday, the Monday of the 19th, but I'll be back Wednesday as well.
Oh, okay. So, what about this August 22nd?
Yeah, maybe we could do a different day that week, so.
That's a Thursday.
Yeah, is that bad for you?
No, I was just, I thought you were talking, like, you both said Wednesday.
Oh, we're both coming back Wednesday.
I'll actually be back Tuesday night.
I won't be a big.
Twenty seconds.
I'll be gone on the 19th.
The 22nd.
I'm going on the 22nd.
You're gone?
Yeah.
You're gone that whole week?
Yeah, so you couldn't do the 19th either, and Dennis, you couldn't.
No.
And you're gone the whole week of the 12th, Liza? Okay.
And we don't know about Paul.
We don't know about Paul.
How about the end of the, I'm going the beginning of the week before, but, but not, I'll be back on the.
Liza's out the whole week.
The 5th.
I'm gone the whole week.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think.
Well, the problem with the week of the 5th is that it doesn't get us very close to, right, the end. I mean, is.
And the week of the 26th is right at school.
I reluctantly would offer up the 26th, only because it's a huge day for us, but, but it is important that we meet before school starts, so if that would work for everybody, you know.
Which day is convocation, the 28th?
The 26th. 26th is the new teacher orientation.
New teacher orientation, convocation.
Convocation is the 28th, Wednesday.
If we have, I mean, if we have a majority for the 12th.
Excuse me?
We have a majority for the 12th or the 22nd, but Ed's not here on the 22nd, Liza's not here on the 12th.
The 29th also is open, I mean, granted, is that, I mean, we're all in town, because our kids are starting school on that Tuesday or Monday.
Yeah, but it's a really tough week.
Well, it's Thursday.
It's Thursday.
Yeah, but it's Labor Day weekend, and there's no football practice that weekend.
Yeah, but these guys are all, that's convocation and all that.
But the point of reading is to, if you have information to share that requires your action.
Before school starts.
29th is much later than the 26th, so.
Could you do the 26th painfully?
Painfully, yeah, but if everybody can come, that lessons of pain, so.
Well, what we can do is, we'll look at it, we'll set up an agenda that's light.
Yep.
After a month. Good luck.
No, it's not so much the agenda per se, it's just all the things to get ready for, but if you all can come that day, that is.
Well, now Paul's going to have to make it.
So, everybody else, the 26th works?
I don't know when I'm bringing my daughter back to college, it could be that day, but.
It probably is. I'm going the week before.
Right, so, but, right now, I have nothing on that day. I just know I have a kid going back to college.
Well, want to tentatively put it on the 26th, and then maybe we could move it?
Sure.
Depending on the majority of folks, that makes sense for the, for the most people. That first year, the one meeting I've missed, it was the August meeting my first year.
In the summer, we also have started the meetings at 7:00 and 7:30.
Yes, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Now, Connie knows, is just, I will not be able to make the 26th.
Oh, you cannot.
Oh, yeah.
No, I can't, I'm sorry.
So, you can't make the whole week before or the 26th?
Correct. It's down from the 14th to the 28th.
So, nice for you.
So, if that's the case, we probably better off doing it the 22nd then, right?
Oh.
Because Ed was the only one that couldn't make the 22nd.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
That's true. Yeah, you're going to be gone any of those days.
If you're going in any event, the 22nd would be better for these guys.
I'm sorry, but you're going to have to miss the August meeting.
You guys would prefer the 22nd to the 26th?
I think so, yes.
It doesn't matter.
Make it the 22nd.
And let's do it the 22nd.
Good, thank you. So, what do you think about a meeting with Glenn Kuchar?
I think it's a great idea.
I could do it next Monday. I'll start with that.
Yeah, I'm going, I'm leaving Sunday for, until the 2nd, so I'm going.
Until July 2nd?
Yeah. The 11th, 11th, 15th, and 16th, I believe. 11th, what day, 11th?
11th is.
11th is a Thursday.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't, I could do it, I think I could do it the first.
The 11th, 15th, and 16th work for me.
And the 11th does not work for me.
Okay. 15th and 16th?
Yeah, those other days are.
I could not do the 16th, well, it would be with you anyway, I would not be able to do the 16th.
Yeah, any of those days, but the 11th for me.
I could do the 15th, or?
I can do the 15th.
Liza, most importantly.
Yeah, 15th work for you?
Are you away that?
Yeah, 15th works for you.
No, no, I.
This saves you from a full day of seminar somewhere.
Actually, the full day is actually quite good.
Well, you can still go. You talking about July 15th?
Yeah.
July.
At what time? Six.
I can do the 15th, I can do those two days, I'd prefer the 16th, but.
Well, there's an ad hoc sped meeting that night at 6:30.
On the 15th?
On the 15th.
So, the 16th?
And that's, Doc said you couldn't make it, but you don't need to be there. Yeah, I do.
No, I don't need to be there.
You would like to be there.
No, no, because typically, typically, I am not part of it, it's me with.
Or the first or the second, what about the first or the second?
I'm going the 2nd.
Wow, you guys are.
Traveling.
Traveling fools, okay.
Well, some of us travel, because our kids are in college.
So, the 16th works for everybody?
Yep.
This is something early, like 6:00 PM, or what time? This is something early, like six PM or what time do you do it?
Maybe five.
Well, I think we need at least three hours, you know, three to four hours. So I think we've done like five to eight, but had dinner.
Yeah.
Part of the meeting.
Five to eight?
Yeah. Five to eight on the sixteenth. Okay, great.
Seven, sixteen. Can we do it here?
Yeah.
Yes. Well, we're on a roll, so now is there any consideration or discussion about a Saturday morning planning meeting as we had last September? I think people felt that July was an easier month to deal with than August, but-
I'm not, I'm not free any Saturday in August.
In August, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's why we were looking.
July, it would, twentieth or twenty-seventh.
Is it too early though to do it in July?
We did it September fifteenth last time.
I mean, is it too early to do it in July?
I don't know. What, what are we gonna know in, you know, in, in September that we don't know in July about, you know, with the, I mean, it's a big picture kind of thing.
Well, you know, also, given that we just scheduled the state with Glenn, you know, it strikes me that as you answer questions and ask questions and so on, you may get some sense of where we're going and-
Right.
The only, the only problem with September is, is Saturday morning for it, for parent folks.
Or, or do it, or do it a separate, a second, a different night. But, you know, that kind of a meeting is really better in the morning.
I would agree. With lots of coffee.
Well, we don't, we don't have Paul, so maybe we should think further about that and quit while we're ahead.
Is that something we can do by, we can maybe email Paul?
We can. We can check with Paul. I mean, if we're gonna do a Saturday in July, for me, the twentieth or the twenty-seventh.
I'm also not opposed to like a Monday morning, starting early and ending early.
You're going?
Hmm? Monday morning, starting early, ending early?
Early meaning like five AM?
No.
But I know, I'd say seven or seven-thirty. Go into ten thirty.
I'm not good at five.
I mean-
I don't think that, well.
I mean, the nice thing about the summertime, sun does come up before five, so.
Does.
Only for a few more weeks though.
I could, I could start conditioning myself to get up that early if I start now. You know, each, a couple minutes each day.
It's gonna get me in early July when I'm still on the middle school schedule.
Yeah. For me, for me, I think it would be tough because I'm going on vacation in July. So for me to take another like half day essentially would be a challenge.
Twenty or twenty-seventh works for me.
I could only do the twentieth and not-
I could not do the twentieth.
I think we should wait till September.
I think we should wait, we should table this for now.
Okay.
Nice try.
That's fine.
No, it's fine. We've got three dates. We didn't have three dates last week.
Well, I bet you do it like early Labor Day.
You can do it early Labor Day.
Do it like a picnic breakfast.
It's Labor Day.
Right, exactly.
So enrollment projection update.
Okay, you have a copy of projection number two, which reflects data from last Friday. And actually, it's the third projection, because when we met in early May with all the principals, we came up with some numbers. Based upon those numbers, we made determinations of how many sections at which building. And so then we did another project, projection two weeks ago, and I'll continue this through the summer. Get them to you even if we aren't meeting. Not a lot of big changes here from the last time around. Kindergarten at two eighty-seven, that's pretty significant, given that this year's kindergarten is two fifty-six. So that's a bump up that we hadn't anticipated, well, shouldn't say we hadn't anticipated. When we got our original numbers from Eileen McCracken about births in that year, five years ago, we did sense the projection would be up. Our grade one, up forty-three net students from current kindergarten. And I, I made the comment at the last meeting that while this year, it was an increase of sixty-seven students, it is a net number. And the forty-three does reflect a number of retentions a bit higher than typical. And also move outs that is a bit higher than typical. So, so I'm not sure that the forty-three is the beginning of a downward trend, but it is a number to, to watch. So the total number of elementary projected is twenty thirty-seven. We have twenty forty-two. We did need to add obviously a kindergarten section. And we had in the budget a one-point-oh increase, and that went to grade two at South School. You can see the averages at the bottom. And averages don't tell the whole story, obviously, but twenty-one, twenty-one-point-seven, twenty-one-point-seven and twenty-two-point-two, so not-
So in the, in the, little over two weeks from the last projection, it's up ten kids?
It's up ten, yes, it is.
So based on past experience, would we expect it to continue to rise or?
Yes, but maybe only one or two each time. Not, not a huge number. The kindergarten is key and, and we don't typically get a lot of increases over the summer. There are some, obviously, if some folks simply move in. But at the elementary level, many times if people are going to be moving in over the summer, they, they contact us early on because they're concerned about enrollment and how they, that process would work. And they want packets mailed out and so on, which doesn't happen as much at, at other grade levels. So right now, we're at an increase of one-point-five FTEs. And, and that we can manage within our operating budget. We do have some changes in staffing that have occurred since the budget was passed. In fact, today, we had a resignation of someone who's going to another community. And we don't know yet, it's fairly young teachers, so whether or not that will result in some additional savings or not. We've had some other retirements. We had a couple of weeks, two retirements in one week that were unanticipated. And both of those resulted in some savings. So I'm not concerned about the budget of needing to add the other kindergarten. But we're watching very carefully the kindergarten numbers at Foster, because right now it's three at twenty-two. Plymouth River, the same number of youngsters, but I think I mentioned to you that one of those four kindergartens is a full-day kindergarten and has eight or nine children with special needs. So that number needs to be, that class size needs to be significantly lower. I also want to clarify, because I didn't make this clear the last time around, that we have a full-day kindergarten extended day with children with special needs. And the typical children in that district paying for the other half of that day. We have those classes at Plymouth River and at South School. And then at the E-School, we have a small, what we call an intensive integrated kindergarten class, where those children are not able to be integrated for the full day with typical students. So it's a separate group of teachers, of students. They have a teacher. And then as the individual students are able, they are integrated for portions of the day, which are accessible to, to their needs for pieces of the day. And so it's a very different model from what happens at Plymouth River.
So in Plymouth River, south and east, you're saying one of the four sections is a full-day section?
Exactly.
Which needs to be a, a smaller class?
Yes. And then the other three are half-day, half-day sessions. So also, we, we're at twenty thirty-seven. Last time we did this, we were at twenty twenty-seven. And I mentioned to you that we are anticipating replacing some MEKO students who've, who've lost us, who've left us. And we're anticipating that six would come at this elementary level. And they would be at Foster School in grades one and two. And at South School, where we had added a teacher to reduce the class size, we can, we can take a couple of students there. On the back, you have the secondary projections. And we're looking at nine ninety-five at the middle school. And at the high school, eleven fifty-three, so some growth there. So overall, you know, likely growth is gonna be in the fifty to sixty student range. And that's about where it's been, a little bit less. We've been averaging sixty-something youngsters over the past eight, ten years. So slight growth, but not, not huge growth. So I'll keep you posted, even though we won't be meeting regulations on these numbers.
Thank you.
And I should say too, related to that, we're very busy with hiring. I think I've met so far with fourteen new staff members, excluding the administrators that are here anyway. And I think overall, it's going to be more than thirty teacher staff members. And that represents retirements, some resignations. Folks who were on a full-year leave this year and decided to take a second year. And then some new folks that are taking a full-year leave. So it doesn't include the maternity leaves, which would be for eight weeks or twelve weeks, those kinds of things, so. So we may need to add a second bus for the tour that we do on the orientation day. We'll see about that later. But it's a, it's a big number. And a lot of credit goes to, to our principals and directors who send me wonderful candidates. I get so excited this time to be able to meet them and their enthusiasm and their, their excitement about coming to work here is really paramount when you, when you meet the young folks. So, so that's a very good thing. I, I've told you before that we use SchoolSpring, which is a new tool for us this year in terms of advertising. And so I met with a young woman the other day for one of the elementary openings. And the principal's supposed to put, how many applications did we get? How many did we interview when we hired this person? And, you know, at the elementary level, it may be four hundred twenty applications were received. Now, not all of those obviously are, are well-qualified, but eleven were interviewed and then hired the one person. So the pool-
Wow.
Of applicants through SchoolSpring is much larger. Makes, makes more work to sort through to be sure that you get people that have all of qualifications. But, but in general, that has been a good move.
So Doc, excuse me, looking at the secondary, so if I look at this right, if, if grade twelve is now two sixty-one plus four, two sixty-five?
Yeah, well-
And, and grade eight is three forty-two, right? Does that mean that grade twelve leaves us next year and grade eight moves up? That we're gonna have, if, if the rest of the cohorts proceed as, as we might expect, that that would be an increase of eighty kids?
No, because we'll have kids that will go off to private school.
Oh, okay, got it.
Ninth grade is a key year. Although you might see some of that earlier now, that Notre Dame is accepting seventh graders.
Well, yeah, I was going to mention that. We've just, perhaps read in the paper. And we had the opportunity to meet the other day with a person from Notre Dame. They are going to be moving effective with the class of two thousand, the, the September two thousand fourteen group. Putting in a seventh grade class and then following year adding an eighth grade class. And what we found when B.C. did the same thing a number of years ago is that the total number of students who went out of district to B.C. didn't change. But many of those students went earlier, I'm sure are concerned to be sure that the child gets in while there's still room. And a few were slots for ninth grade and so on. So we had a conversation about that. And she indicated that the, the intent is to try to keep the size of the school overall the same, at about six hundred students. So the way that will happen is that as they create classes for seventh grade and eighth grade, they will be smaller than the current classes. So then over time, you'll have four classes of hun-, six classes, excuse me, of a hundred, as opposed to four of, of about one forty or fifty. So that will not impact us this year. They'll be marketing this year. But in two thousand fourteen, they'll have a seventh grade.
Increase revenue and become more selective at the same time. Interesting.
Actually, we, you know, we asked what the motivation was, and it was a very good point. They draw from something like forty communities, forty-two communities. And so if you think of a ninth grade class made up of students from forty-one different communities that all have very different kinds of middle school programs, some offer foreign language, some don't offer foreign language. Some have leveling of subjects in the, the middle school years and others don't. That this is a way for them to get kids all on a similar background footing before they start ninth grade.
Plus B.C. High's doing it, so. Why not have some girls balance that all out?
Thanks for that. We have, the next four items are appointments. To piggyback off your comment about hiring this summer, which you'll be busy at. Do we have forty-eight hour items? Well, the change order was something I covered on the concession, but that was a forty-eight hour.
We do have one, and that is that on Thursday afternoon, after the packet went out, we opened the greenhouse bid. So, John, you wanna comment on that?
Yeah. Yeah, we went out to bid for the greenhouse and we opened those bids on June thirteenth. And we had three bidders bid, Nexus Corporation, Griffin Greenhouse and Ludi Greenhouses. The bids came between thirty thousand oh seven-two, which was the low, and thirty-seven four oh nine. And the, you know, and basically we had speced out a, a particular bid. They all bid on a similar or equivalent type bid. And Ludi was the low bidder, Ludi Greenhouse, and they came in at thirty thousand seventy-two dollars. Subsequent to that, we had conversations with them on the phone to make sure we understood the bid package well. Katie was on the phone as well as Paul Field. You know, so, and I think we're, we're satisfied that this kit would be sufficient and suitable for the purposes for building the greenhouse and the courtyard there. And definitely within our planned budget, I mean, we had thought that it was gonna come in around thirty-three or thirty-four thousand dollars with shipping included. So we're actually coming in a little under budget should the committee award, which we're recommending that the committee awarded to Ludi Greenhouse for thirty thousand seventy-two dollars.
And just to remind folks, there was a twenty thousand dollar grant.
Yeah, there was a twenty thousand dollar grant several, several years ago. We have a total of about eighty-two thousand dollars in the greenhouse account. And what we've been doing is, you know, with the help of, with Paul Field and Katie and Paula and Rick Swanson. We've been meeting and we've been compiling pricing to kind of parcel this out such that we buy a greenhouse kit, which for thirty thousand dollars. We have somebody else work a foundation and dig a trench to put the electrical in. We've got prices from the electrical for about five thousand dollars. So we're piecing it together and we think we have adequate funding in the eighty-two thousand. And we can put all this together to have a basic greenhouse structure. Paul Palowski's people will build some of the, the benches for the thing. We will include, you know, equipment for one bunch. But it will be a great situation where we have the structure up and running and it's all functional. And over time, through the operating budget, we can increase the equipment and, and move the program into a great educational-
And are we proposing to do it this summer?
The, yes, the plan here, the lead time for this is about six weeks. We've asked for this to be delivered by July twenty-second, and no event later than July thirty-first because we want to be able to have time to get it erected and have it all set before the kids get back to school.
Cool. Awesome.
So, you know, with, with this, and the reason why we're asking for the award to be done now really is because we want to continue on. We'll have the spec, it'll be a stamp plan. And then we can get the foundation better designed and start work, doing the foundation work. And when the kit comes in, sort of be ready to hire and install. We will be hiring and installing to put this in. We won't be doing it ourselves.
Was it Ludi, L-U-D-E?
Yeah, L-U-D-Y, Greenhouse. And they're from New Madison, Ohio. And their bid price was thirty thousand seventy-two dollars.
I'll make a motion that we award to Ludi Greenhouse the low bidder in the amount of thirty thousand seventy-two dollars. The, a contract to provide a greenhouse kit-
Right.
For installation-
By others.
By others at the high school.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's great. It's been about, what, four, three, four, I remember, was it?
My daughter was a senior in high school. She was part of that crew, actually, that won the award.
That's right. Twenty-ten.
It'll be four years.
But it's not that we've totally ignored it.
Nope, I know.
We've had many efforts to find a place and a size and a structure and a bid.
Going in the right direction.
Didn't the bids come in at two hundred and something thousand dollars?
Two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars.
We're, we're moving forward and it's all good.
So you all should be happy that we looked at that figure and said, you know what, we need to go higher again.
Too high. Responsible. Time and time again. Okay.
Excellent, thank you.
But it does show, you know, no good deed goes unpunished.
That's right.
We got this wonderful twenty thousand and so much enthusiasm for the- We've got this wonderful $20,000 and so much enthusiasm with the teacher and the kids and so on. But in the end, it caused us a lot of challenges.
And it's all grant, it's a grant, the grant money plus donations.
Donations, right.
Top of funding is a perk. Thanks to all the donators.
Any other short notice items?
No.
Okay. Building committee report, just real quickly, we met last week, the fifth? I don't remember. It's two weeks ago almost now. Sorry.
Yeah, I think it was right after our last meeting.
Two weeks ago, yeah. Construction is progressing nicely. I think we're about 45% complete at this point. We finalized the signage package, which I think will look terrific, you know, including recycling signage for the cafeteria and also the main hallway. Banners that will go outside the school, inside the school. The furniture fixtures and equipment meetings continue with staff to, you know, go through the programmatic needs. And in terms of furniture, to the extent that we don't have things that we can salvage from the old school, to choose furniture and equipment items. Window installation has begun. All the heavy HVAC and other mechanical equipment was raised and installed. We actually just had some additional tree removal done for neighbors associated with some trees that are actually on the school property that fell during the storm in February, was it? I think. So otherwise, it's, everything's going well. It's on a below budget. It's on time. Really nothing negative.
I have only one quick question there. As we had all these discussions about recycling the last few weeks, and I couldn't help but noticing, as I've become more aware of these, these all the waterless toilet urinals that are popping up in men's rooms, is that some, is that way more expensive than a conventional toilet?
It's, it's not just expensive. There, we rejected that early on in the design process for the middle school. We specifically talked about it at more than one meeting. And it was the cost, it was maintenance, the fact that you had to buy products for it that were more costly than, so we did, we did look at that.
Good.
But that's all I have on that. Any questions? Subcommittee reports, I don't know that we've, you've got a special ed...
Well, Liza and I attended the Hingham Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And why don't you give a little blip, and then I'll talk to you about the trip that I went.
All right. So it was the first meeting of their new board for the incoming year. And they gave updates on their fundraising and their fund run. But they also, one of the interesting things they talked about was the Apple Institute that they attended, which is, if I can remember properly, it's a statewide program that they invite different districts, different CPAC groups from different school districts to work on their planning for the years. And there are some towns that don't have any CPAC organization. And so our group felt pretty good that, you know, they thought they were behind the ball, but they're actually in good shape. And Liz Flynn attended with them as well. And so there were five or six CPAC representatives, parents, that went with Liz, and they were able to do a long-term plan of what they want to accomplish for the next couple of years. And the whole group felt good that they had the chance to spend time with Liz, and she had time to spend with them. And so they have some good initiatives going, so.
I piggyback on that. They have asked, as they did last year, for a brief minute of time on the meeting in July to just give their update. They came last year to the activities they've had over the past year. And I told them as soon as we knew what the date was, we would let them know about that.
They may have one minute.
Actually, I don't think they took too much more than that.
Well, they have a new board of directors, and I think that'll be part of introducing the new people.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, great.
And then last week, myself, Laura Burns, and Linda Port went into the General Court of Massachusetts and participated in a public hearing on 17 bills that have to do with special education. Some combos, there are some House, some Senate, and some combination. Laura spoke very eloquently for the three key points that have been determined by the ad hoc funding group, the full circuit breaker funding and transportation costs. The second point that we talked about was the extraordinary high cases and adjust the timing for payment to the same fiscal year. And I thought it was very informative, and, but I went.
And interesting, I bet.
It was.
That's great.
And to piggyback on that, you know, we got that long list that I shared with you earlier this spring, all the hearings that are related to education. So there were a number that were related to special ed, and the working group met with Garrett and gave a lot of consideration to this particular meeting would have a lot of focus. There is also a meeting on June 27th. It's a 10 to 2 hearing. And it has not special ed items, but a number of bills that are related to mandates, unfunded mandates, mandates...
And...
And so the, because, because the Superintendent's Association in particular, but also MASC, because they have spoken so loudly, so often about mandates, the Superintendent's Association is trying to encourage large attendance, even to the point where one community on the North Shore is offering up a bus to bring other people from that area. And the feeling is that if we want to make an impact, it's not enough to continue to complain. It's important to be there. So while they're particularly targeting superintendents to come, I think any folks that we could get to come to the State House on that day would be important.
27th.
The 27th, and the hearing goes roughly from 10 to, 10 to 1, 10 to 2 in the middle of the, middle of the day. I'll get to you the list of the particular bills, but we really just have titles for them, but a number of them have to do with mandates.
Thank you.
Superintendent's?
Yeah, I don't think we have any other subcommittee reports at this time. Anything under superintendent's report?
Just a couple of things. One, the recycling grant did go in. Toward the end of the process, it was believed that in addition to the many signatures that were needed on it, that it would be good to have a signature from Ted Alexiatis, representing the quote "hiring authority," because as we would move forward with employing this part-time coordinator, that would be important. So we got Ted's signature, and the bill went in, the letter went in, in time to be considered. I want to mention to you in the back of your packet, there is a letter from DESE, the Office of Nutrition, Health, and Safety. It's regarding an additional six cent per lunch reimbursement that we'll be getting. And just a reminder that we need to put on one of the agenda, probably the July 1 discussion. So we'll talk more about that. That is a report that we had deferred from earlier in the spring. Also, in your packet is a, an email that actually came, and from Brenda Black, representing the high school PTO, advocating for requesting a hydration station from Aquarian, most likely, for the new Fields Concession Building. In other words, one located on the exterior of the building. The high school does have three hydration stations, all sponsored by Aquarian, but they're on the inside of the building. Aquarian is in the process of donating a station to each of the elementary schools. And the thought here is that to the extent that we can reduce plastic bottles on the field area, that was, that's a, that's a huge benefit. So that letter is there. And I, the letters suggest, the email letter suggests that the PTO, and I don't know whether Carol might have a comment, is that the PTO kind of took a position that, so I didn't understand whether it meant that they were going to request or that...
I did not attend the meeting, so I personally don't know.
So I need to clarify that, or whether they're suggesting that the school committee would make the request, but I'll clarify that.
I'm surprised they can put one outside, but, you know.
Well, we talked, we talked a little bit about that. And didn't we have a concern that there might be vandalism?
I, we had the discussion, the original documents actually had an outdoor water fountain.
Yeah, right.
And unfortunately, outdoor water fountains tend to get not pretty. I don't know how to better say it.
That's very accurate.
Indoor ones as well.
And so, I mean, I was one of the people who suggested not to put it in there, and we had consensus there. Now, I don't know if we can have a hydration system on the inside of the building, but, you know, it's not, we did review a water fountain, which I consider a hydration system, and it wasn't...
They are, South School is asking that the one that they have donated be outside, accessible from the outside, so we might, and so Paul has to explore how different they are from the inside installations, and if there is some sort of a vandalism-proof thing or way to make sure that they are as sanitary as they can be.
Well, you've also got...
So we might, we might wait to see what he finds out about that and reconsider.
It would have to be set up, you have a water line going to it, so you'd have to set it up so that it could be cut off and drained in the wintertime, theoretically, right? Because you wouldn't want it to.
But it's a thought, and we, I obviously need some more information, but...
Actually, now that we redesigned it without winterization. I don't know. I mean, in a perfect world, it's a wonderful thing to have, unfortunately. Yes. No, we did talk about it.
Maybe there's a way to do it. I mean, you've designed the system, you probably have designed how to make it childproof or non-childproof.
Well, all the ones we have have been retrofitted with existing plans.
I don't know if it's the children who are damaged.
So I don't know that you have to make the decision...
Right.
Right now.
Right. Okay. I don't think we need an executive session tonight, right?
No, let me just make a comment on something that I can talk about in this session, and that is that we are currently negotiating with the, with Unit A about the educations, educator evaluation changes that need to happen in the contract and the protocols that will govern that process that we developed in a working group. In a similar way, we have negotiations scheduled for next week with the Administrators Association because they too have a guidance. And so, given that at some point, the subcommittee has got to come up with a recommendation for those, the documents themselves are fairly lengthy. And I don't picture that these, nothing to do with money, nothing to do with money, that all of you are going to want to read through all of these redlined documents. However, I do think it's important that you have access to them if you'd like to do that. So I have them both electronically, and I can do one of a number of things. I can make paper copies. I don't want to make seven, but I can make some, and you can loan them out. Or I can email them to you. But certainly, these are available for your review, so that when we do come to agreement, and we're only disagreeing in one area with the, with the teachers, we haven't begun with the administrators, but I don't see that it's going to be that different. So we need to be able, particularly over the summer, to act fairly quickly, to the extent that people want to read these. We absolutely want to make them available, and then you can contact one of us or let a subcommittee member know if you have a question or a concern. So just let me know if you'd like to have a paper copy, or if you'd like me to just send you an email of the two documents. I can take care of that. So I think that will keep us moving forward.
Okay. I think that's all. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.